Afternoon, everyone. Sorry to startle a few of you. Welcome. I'd like to call this order of the San Jose City Council to order for the afternoon of March 26th. Tony, can we take the roll?
Jimenez?
Present.
Torres?
Present.
Cohen? Ortiz?
Present.
Davis?
Here.
Dwan?
Present.
Candelaus?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Botra? Kamé?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Opera San Jose and Councilmember Torres will tell us more.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm thrilled to announce that our final invocation for March will be presented by Opera San Jose. Today is a special occasion as we'll be graced with performances by two incredibly talented artists from Opera San Jose, Cesar Delgado and Melissa Sondi. They'll be treating us to a snippet from their upcoming show, Florencia en el Amazonas, which marks Opera San Jose's first Spanish-language production. It's an honor to have Cesar Delgado making his debut with Opera San Jose in the role of Arcadio. We're also delighted to welcome Melissa Sondi, who is serving as an artist in residence for the 2024 season and will be making three leading roles. Florencia en la Amazonas will be in production at Opera San Jose at California Theater from April 20th to May 5th. So let's show our support for this incredible opera house and its talented performers. My staff has some flyers if anyone is interested. Without further ado, let's enjoy their performance.
Hi, my name is Melissa Sondi and I'm singing the role of Rosalba.
Hi, my name is Cesar Delgado and I'm playing the role of Arcadio in Florencia en el Amazonas. Now, we are going to sing the duet, that this is happening in the Act II duet. In this part of the opera is right after the storm, a huge storm. So these guys are a young couple that they just met at the boat. They are part of, they are on board in a boat called El Dorado, going through the Amazons to Manaus. So in this part of the opera, after the storm, they realizes, they realized that they love each other, but they cannot be together.
Arcadio, Arcadio.
Rosalba, Rosalba.
Arcadio.
Rosalba, Rosalba. Rosalba.
Arcadio. En serio, te amo. Oh, mi amor, te amo.
Si, asen, di, lo que es bueno.
Siento en ti el amor que me es bueno.
Arcadio, so que esperas, Rosalba. Si alguna vez me llevo a enamorar, será de ti.
Y saber será nunca.
Y que si alguna vez.
El amor es una tumba segura.
Tan poco subiría y se queda al su.
Ahí crece la mantragora.
La serpiente sanida.
De la infección.
Incurable, incontrolable.
Te apresa.
Te atrapa. Adverte, si no te amo. Arde, y como. Si llegas y vos a enamorarlos, todo terminará.
Hemos visto los amantes arrancarse el alma.
Y una final.
Todo terminará.
Si no, soy quien muy mágico.
Es verdad.
Soy quien muy mágico.
Es verdad. Hemos visto los amantes arrancarse el alma.
Si, yo también lo he escuchado.
Tú también lo has escuchado. De tu paro, la piel, de piel, y si uno se aman. Pero duermen juntos.
Si, yo también lo he visto. Finísimas návajas en solengua.
Las alas que sufren por amor. Dios, ayúdame, ayúdame, no quiero, lo infiercidor del odio.
Oh, Dios, oh, siempre, Rosalba, Rosalba, oh, Dios, oh, Dios. Oh, Dios, oh, Dios.
Wow, thank you. So, so impressive. Just a reminder for everyone, especially those who came in a little late, you can join Opera San Jose for their first Spanish-language production, Florencia en el Amazonas, from April 20th through May 5th. I don't know about you, but it should only be easier for me to follow along in Spanish than it ever was in Italian. So this will be helpful to many of us. All right. Thank you again for sharing your incredible talent with us. Just muted myself. We are on to ceremonial items and Councilor Ortiz, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Cesar Chavez Day.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's my great honor to proclaim Sunday, March 31st as Cesar Chavez Day, where we recognize the birth and legacy of the civil rights and labor movement of the activist Cesar Chavez. As a representative for E. San Jose, the legacy of Cesar Chavez, as well as fellow farmworker leaders, Dolores Huerta, Larry Itliong, and Philip Vera Cruz, means a great deal to our community. E. San Jose was the birthplace of a movement that changed our country forever. Cesar first began his storied career as an organizer with the Community Service Organization, mentored by Father Donald McDonnell at Our Lady of Guadalupe in the Mayfair neighborhood. Years later, he began his first of many famous boycotts at a former Safeway supermarket around the corner where Mexican Heritage Plaza now stands. Cesar's organizing campaigns of farmworkers throughout the state under the banner of the National Farm Workers Association and later the United Farm Workers became a major inspiration to Latinos across the country. Taking inspiration from nonviolent direct action tactics by civil rights leaders at the time, infused with Catholic social teachings with which he was raised. Cesar led many successful campaigns, including the Delano Grape Boycott and the passage of the California Agricultural Relations Act. These victories permanently shaped how this country viewed and treated our farmworkers, Latinos, Filipino-Americans, and immigrants of all stripes, building a lasting foundation for the movements that continued to follow. That legacy is felt today by many of this city's great social justice movements and organizations. That's why I'm grateful to be joined by one such organization, Amigos de Guadalupe, who have been doing amazing work in advocacy for better conditions for working families and immigrant communities in Santa Clara County. And now I'd like to pass the mic to Maritza Maldonado from Amigos to share some words.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. So this quote, thank you. This quote and picture actually has sat every place I've gone and it really speaks to the work that we do at Amigos. Once social change begins, it cannot be reversed. You cannot uneducate the person who has learned to read. You cannot humiliate the person who feels pride. You cannot oppress the people who are not afraid anymore. We have seen the future and the future is ours, Cesar Chavez. My name is Maritza Maldonado, founder and executive director of Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment and this is part of the team back here that does the real work. I just direct the band, so. Amigos de Guadalupe is inspiration from the organizing spirit, underlying values of social justice, nonviolent resistance that were hallmarks to Cesar Chavez and the Chavez family, all who fought for justice and a just society for people, including the unserved and underserved people of Mayfair and E. San Jose. In this spirit, we accept the proclamation on behalf of all those organizations that continue to fight for a more just society in E. San Jose and beyond. As we celebrate Cesar Chavez, may we always remember all the organizers and justice leaders who have worked tirelessly to create a more just and equitable society for all. In the spirit of Cisepuede, we urge the city council to vote yes on tenant preference. And I'd like you to join me in the unity clap because for us, it's a really important piece of Cesar Chavez. So it begins slow and goes faster and I'll ask Ms. Rain to come up and he will lead you.
Yes, how are you? The unity clap is a clap that Cesar Chavez used to use in the farmworker movement, right, to communicate with the Filipino workers, you know? And it starts as slow as the beat of your heart, but it finishes strong as the fight we're doing in E. San Jose and San Jose. So if you can follow it, we'll go slow, right?
Se puede, se puede, se puede, se puede. Si se puede, si se puede, si se puede, si se puede, si se puede.
Que viva Cesar Chavez.
Que viva.
The mayor will now present you with the proclamation. You got that? Okay. We'll take a picture now, but if my colleagues would like to join, please, you're always welcome with us. Just a little bit more this way.
Felicidades.
Felicidades.
Gracias, gracias.
Thank you so much for being here.
Good to see you.
Good, good, good to see you.
All right, next, Councilmember Davis will join me in recognizing Marguerite Lee.
And I think we've got a bunch of supporters who should come down for the picture so that Marguerite's not here by herself. Does the board want to come down? Come on. Kirk, you can come down too. Good afternoon. I am pleased today to recognize and celebrate Marguerite Lee for her exemplary dedication, leadership, and impactful contributions to our community. Marguerite has served on the Board of the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy for eight years, including terms as both vice president and president. During her time on the Board, she demonstrated her commitment to preserving and enhancing San Jose's natural spaces. Her leadership and advocacy led to the following milestones, and there are many. The construction and expansion of the Rotary Play Garden, which, as you probably know, is an inclusive play area for individuals of all abilities. The replanting of the historic orchard at Guadalupe River Park. The renovation of the Conservancy's Visitor and Education Center. The installation of over 20 new murals along the Guadalupe River Trail. The growth and impact of the Window on the River Park event, which is an annual benefit that fundraises for the Guadalupe River Park. And an increase in volunteers and GRPC board membership, increasing community stewardship of the park and the trail. Marguerite continues to champion and advocate for volunteer programs, activation events, and environmental education in the park. Marguerite's passion and dedication to our community also extends beyond the Guadalupe River Park. In 2017, she and her partner Kirk Farthan, who is here today, they co-founded San Jose's first retail worker co-op at A Slice of New York, which is fantastic pizza. If you haven't been there, you should definitely go. Through this initiative, she created opportunities for local workers to thrive, contribute to the city's vibrant economy, and also share in the profits that they create. Marguerite's contributions have left a lasting and positive impact on the city of San Jose, embodying the spirit of civic duty and making her a true asset to our community. She is a neighbor and a friend in District 6, and I am happy to recognize her through this commendation. Let's give her a round of applause. And she doesn't want to speak, so mayor, if you could just give her the commendation and we'll do a picture.
You're like a terrible politician. Thanks for everything that you've done.
Got to get Kirk in here.
but who has and continues to be a strong champion of a variety of environmental issues on city council. This year, we acknowledge the importance of not only Earth Day, but Earth Month, to raise awareness and inspire action for environmental protection and sustainability. The city of San Jose was the first large city to set a goal of being carbon neutral by 2030. Councilmember Cohen was an inspirational leader in that. We celebrate the progress we've made and reaffirm our commitment to protect the environment as we continue to strive to be carbon neutral. We must preserve and protect our natural resources, biodiversity, and ecosystems to ensure a healthy and prosperous future for all. Earth Month is full of opportunities throughout the Silicon Valley to come together and take action to protect our planet, including six events that my office is co-hosting throughout District 9. Earth Day is so big, it needs a month, at least. I encourage everyone to set aside a moment this month to participate in an activity near them, such as tree planting, or cleanup initiatives, such as the Great American Litter Pickup, that are led by the Beautify SJ Team and the mayors and city council offices. To accept today's proclamation, we are joined by representatives from Hacienda Science Elementary Magnet School located in District 9 and my daughter's alma mater. I'd like to invite to introduce Principal Todd Weber, science teacher Davina Kong, science teacher assistants Joyce Pahn, Dana Kreiser, Jean Yoshida, and a representative from HIPS, the Hacienda Involved Parent and Staff Treasurer, Francesca Capper. Hacienda is dedicated to teaching students to explore the natural world around them and offers the unique opportunity for students to learn in their one-acre outdoor classroom, featuring California native pines and pond communities and redwood trees. The school takes Earth Month to another level by fostering a culture of environmental responsibility and stewardship year-round for their students and families. As they say in Hacienda, "Every day is Earth Day." Hacienda's students are learning to create a future for all generations, and while today's environmental crisis existed long before them, I can almost guarantee that these building blocks will be the reason they know the way toward a sustainable future. With that, I now invite Principal Todd Weber to come and say a few words before Mayor Mahan presents today's proclamation. Todd?
Thank you, Councilmember Foley, Mayor Mahan, all of the council members and the city of San Jose for allowing San Jose Unified and Hacienda Environmental Science Magnet to accept this Earth Month proclamation that is near and dear to our hearts. In San Jose Unified, we're focused on preparing today's students to be the thinkers, leaders, and creators of tomorrow. And at Hacienda Environmental Science Magnet, we foster this love of learning and curiosity through engaging students in hands-on science as we seek to produce environmental stewards that will go on to protect Earth far beyond their elementary years. We are fortunate at Hacienda to have a dedicated science team standing behind me, a hard-working and caring staff, and a wonderful parent group, HIPS, that continue to foster one of the most amazing learning environments around. It doesn't hurt to also have a one-acre outdoor science classroom where our students get to explore different California biomes just outside their everyday classroom. So to all my hawks, to all San Jose Unified students, and all children working eagerly in their class right now, which we all have to get back to, continue to be curious and be thinkers, leaders, and creators that take care of our precious planet, not only now through the month of April with Earth Month, but each and every day. Thank you again, Councilmember Foley, for allowing us to accept this very important proclamation.
Picture time.
Let's go over here, so we're away from the podium a little bit.
Okay, we are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Not aware of any. Okay, moving on to the closed session report.
Thank you, mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Great, thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull from the consent calendar? I don't believe I was notified of any. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Condell is seconded by Councilmember Foley. Let's go to public comment on the consent calendar.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, mayor, while we were waiting, I had wanted to just pull 2.13 just for question and comment. They can stay within the motion, but I just want to...
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. Nice to be back. Life's good in San Jose, I mean, San Diego. Nice to be here. For myself, for item 2.8 was about ending emergency declarations that were created February 3rd about storm issues. As you ended your Zoom broadcasting to the community February 6th, I hope it can be of concern to yourselves, as important as to address the Zoom issues were, we had serious emergency issues going on. We also had COVID issues going on. So there were storm issues and a slight rise in COVID at the time that should have brought questions to yourselves. I don't doubt the sincerity of wanting to end the Zoom. I hope you can consider bringing it back this summer. And in the future, if you're going to spring these ideas on us that you did as a kind of, you know, surprise, so it can be quick and immediate, I hope you take a little more caution next time and a little more care, and maybe plan these things at the end of February instead of the beginning. With my remaining time, for item 2.18 is about Measure T issues, bond issues. Just a reminder that as Measure T was rolled out, an important concept of it was the concept of creating as a public oversight board for these new bonding, bond funding dollars. Good luck that you're, it's a good program, and I think we're enjoying the fruits of the public oversight process for a few new items, sales tax items and the like. So good luck and continue good practices that we all appeal towards public oversight ideas. It's a real helpful process. And to also note that, good luck in the Sister City program that identifies concepts of peace. It was dropped today, and it should have been talked about as orders of the day. Should have loved public comment.
Thank you. Your time is up. Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Councilmember Cohen, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question or of staff on item 2.13. So, Ken Kelly is here? Is Kelly here? Or... 2.13. No, no, Measure T hits homelessness grant. Homelessness grant. Yeah, I just wanted to sort of praise you for, praise our staff for continuing to find resources to bring in for our homelessness efforts, and just ask a question about how you expect to allocate these funds in terms of the $28 million that would bring in from the state on our homelessness program, and what kinds of programs would be funded by it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the question, councilmember. I'm Kelly Hemphill. I'm a division manager overseeing homelessness response in the Housing Department. For the fifth round of HAP, we expect to allocate our funding in a variety of ways. One, we are required to set aside about 10% for youth, homeless youth, and we will be continuing the programs that you all approved back in November for a guaranteed basic income for homeless and at-risk youth. The remaining dollars will largely be allocated for EIH operations and outreach and engagement and a few small other programs, but those are the two big strategies that we're prioritizing.
Great, well, thank you so much. I just wanted to thank you for continuing to do the hard work to make sure we have the resources to address this big pressing need and make sure that we all are aware about the incredible support that we're getting from the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, councilmember. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're on to a joint city of San Jose, city council, housing authority agenda item. This is support for the federal fiscal year 2025 Moving to Work Annual Plan. And my notes said that Preston might be here to say a few words. Is that, hey, there he is. Preston, did you want to offer some opening comments? Either is fine.
I do have some comments.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, I'm happy to be here. I just celebrated my 60th birthday, so, you know, struggling with getting back into work.
Well, happy birthday.
Thanks, that's what I was really trying for. Shameless promoter. Let me pull it up real quick. So, thank you, Mayor Mahan and councilmembers. I am Preston Prince. I'm the executive director of the Santa Clara County Housing Authority. Santa Clara County Housing Authority administers federal housing choice voucher program for both the county housing authority and the city housing authority. The housing authorities is also affordable housing developer and owner. We own 2,800 housing units across 34 communities. We have 1,000 units in our pipeline, 250 units under construction, and we're going to start construction on 100-unit development just on the street in the next few months. Altogether, we serve 23,000 families, both families and seniors, 13,500 seniors, 10,000 children, 44,000 people altogether. I'm here today regarding our 2025 Move to Work plans, the middle. Briefly, let me summarize Move to Work. Moving to Work was established by Congress in 1996 to allow housing authorities to develop innovative local approaches to meeting the community needs. Both the city housing authority and the county housing authority were designated as Move to Work agencies in 2008. Each year, we propose new Move to Work activities in our Move to Work Annual Plan. Activities are ideas and proposals with some detail, not a whole lot, but some detail. An activity also seeks one or all three of a waiver, of HUD regulation, single fund flexibility, or local non-traditional assistance. An activity is not strictly rental assistance. Last year, in April, we submitted the 2024 Move to Work Plan on behalf of the city and county housing authorities that included an unprecedented number of activities that were approved last fall by HUD. And I say unprecedented because HUD staff told us last year, as they were reviewing our proposal, that it was the most ambitious plan that they had seen submitted by a Move to Work agency. Our Move to Work ideas in 2024 included ideas around homeownership, interim housing, a scholar house for parents obtaining post-secondary education, and digital inclusion. This year, we're focusing on the planning and implementation details for the 2024 activities that were approved, so there's only one new activity that we're proposing for 2025, and it's around small-area fair market rents that the council has read in the staff memo. HUD is mandating that we implement fair market rents at the ZIP code level as opposed to the historical method of fair market rents being established at the county level. With small-area FMRs, some inexpensive areas in the county, much of which is in the city of San Jose, would see rent subsidies decrease, and more expensive areas would see rent subsidies increase. The concept driving HUD is to provide financial assistance in the form of higher Section 8 payments, so families can choose to move to parts of the county that have been designated as high-opportunity areas and correspondingly have higher highs, have higher housing costs. HUD is not proposing to provide additional funds to pay for these small-area FMR increases. They believe that the program will be revenue-neutral by decreasing Section 8 payments to families in lower-cost areas, thereby keeping the requirement of adopting small-area FMRs as revenue-neutral. We know that doesn't quite make sense. We think that this could have serious impact on existing families in the low-housing-cost areas, particularly for many of the families living in the city of San Jose. So our Move to Work activity is to hold harmless those households in less-expensive areas. We want to hold them harmless from the unintended consequences of adopting smaller FMRs. As small-area FMRs can be quite technical, I'd be happy to answer questions you might have. I do appreciate that a few of you have reached out to us, and we've met with you over the last few days, so you can learn a little bit more about small-area FMRs. I want to say I'm always happy for us to meet with you one-on-one, and with that, I want to thank you for considering the approval of the 2025 Move to Work Plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Preston. And there may be some follow-up questions. Appreciate that initial context. Let's go to public comment first, if we have any.
Mayor?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thank you a lot for this item. Thank you for talking about fiscal year 2025 issues here at this time. I'm interested in how, informative words, thank you, in the presentation, I'm interested in talking about working with ZIP code ideas. By the year 2029, it's my understanding that mixed-income ideas of housing have to be, are kind of more mandated here in California, and we have to be practicing them more openly and clearly. And I always have been a big proponent here that if we start talking about those issues now, cooperative housing, cooperative building in the future of our neighborhoods, a more cooperative process, it gets ourselves prepared in what to think about and expect and understand and what I think is a really interesting, hopeful future. And it does involve cooperation and patience, and, you know, we have to start talking about it more at some point. And when we do, I think it can give us an array of important, more flexibility in choices in how to build and how to think of housing that can work for more people and more people living together in areas and that can house more people. And I hope we can learn how to make a good start with that and start talking about those things before the mandate process. I get the sense you guys don't want to talk about this till 2026 or '27. Why not start talking about it now? And the ideas of working towards a holistic housing future, that's really important to me, too, in learning about, you know, good holistic practices. as high opportunity areas and correspondingly have higher housing costs. HUD is not proposing to provide additional funds to pay for these small area FMR increases. They believe that the program will be revenue neutral by decreasing Section 8 payments to families in lower-cost areas, thereby keeping the requirement of adopting small area FMRs as revenue neutral. We know that doesn't quite make sense. We think that this could have serious impact on existing families in the low housing cost areas, particularly for many of the families living in the city of San Jose. So, our Move to Work activity is to hold harmless those households in less expensive areas. We want to hold them harmless from the unintended consequences of adopting smaller area FMRs. As small area FMRs can be quite technical, I'd be happy to answer questions you might have. I do appreciate that a few of you have reached out to us and we've met with you over the last few days so you can learn a little bit more about small area FMRs. I want to say I'm always happy for us to meet with you one-on-one, and with that, I want to thank you for considering the approval of the 2025 Move to Work Plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Preston. And there may be some follow-up questions. Appreciate that initial context. Let's go to public comment first if we have any.
Claire.
Thank you a lot for this item. Thank you for talking about fiscal year 2025 issues here at this time. I'm interested in how, informative words, thank you, in the presentation, I'm interested in talking about working with ZIP code ideas. By the year 2029, it's my understanding that mixed-income ideas of housing have to be kind of more mandated here in California, and we have to be practicing them more openly and clearly. And I always have been a big proponent here that if we start talking about those issues now, cooperative housing, cooperative building in the future of our neighborhoods, a more cooperative process, it gets ourselves prepared in what to think about and expect and understand and what I think is a really interesting, hopeful future. And it does involve cooperation and patience, and, you know, we have to start talking about it more at some point. And when we do, I think it can give us an array of important, more flexibility in choices in how to build and how to think of housing that can work for more people and more people living together in areas and that can house more people. And I hope we can learn how to make a good start with that and start talking about those things before the mandate process. I get the sense you guys don't want to talk about this till 2026 or '27. Why not start talking about it now? And the ideas of working towards a holistic housing future, that's really important to me, too, in learning about, you know, good holistic practices. Good luck how you can do that. Prop one is an example recently passed.
Blair, let's stay on topic, please.
Okay, I can make some.
This is about the Moving to Work Plan.
I can make some brilliant comments, but we'll set them aside for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to counsel.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, turning back to colleagues. Counselor Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. I foresee that this program will disproportionately affect the low-income resident in District Five and District Seven, especially when more funding or funnel toward the highest rent area like Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, Cupertino. And my worry is that our low-income residents already suffer as it is, and every single dollar that taken away from them to move to other area will affect their lives. I want to make sure that we ensure that our IGR team work diligently with the federal legislature, including congressmen and senator for the next two cycle with HUD cycle, just to ensure that we're not going to, this program is not going to reduce enough income where it's going to displace our low-income resident and possibly cause them to become unhoused And so, I just want to make it clear that the residents in D5 and D7, they already on to low income or extremely low income. Every single dollar that taken away from them affects their family and how they live in D7. So therefore, I move for approval of the staff memorandum, but also I want to direct our IGR team to work with our federally elected official to ensure that a lowest-income resident voucher are not reduced, to ensure that they are not displaced or made homeless.
Thank you for the motion, including staff rec. Let me just turn to Lee. Any clarifying questions on the second item?
Actually, two things. If I can ask Zane to come down and bail me out, but also ask Councilmember Dwan to clarify the motion. So, obviously, work with Congress as well as HUD administrators, but we're trying to make sure that this program still targets our most vulnerable residents. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm asking so that way, if you work with legislature and HUD to not reduce their voucher, especially in residents who are in District Five and Seven.
Okay. What I think is, a lot of that is covered under our existing legislative guidelines, I would imagine, especially around some of our housing and affordable housing. So what I would suggest, council members, maybe we're supposed to come back the third or fourth week of April with our spring IGR report, and maybe we include a few paragraphs of what that work looks like and a special call-out, because I think the council has already actually given us kind of that leverage and flexibility and focus around some of those desired outcomes.
I'll look forward to that.
And Counselor, just to clarify.
Second.
I think we already have a second.
We already have a second.
Yeah. Counselor Batra, seconded. Just to make sure I'm clear, that sounds like a good solution. What I heard is the concern, I just want to clarify if this is where you're going with this, is that the strategy around helping residents get to higher resource, higher opportunity neighborhoods, given the very high cost of living here, could, may not, I think it needs further analysis, be the best trade-off overall because the dollar value of helping one family afford the rent in Palo Alto, for example, just to use an example that may or may not be relevant here, would be dollars that could help two or three families stay housed in District Seven for, so the question is one of trade-offs, I think, is that, I'm seeing everyone's head nod. So I think we're all on the same page about what we want to further explore and understand if we should be doing some federal advocacy around. Is that correct?
Thank you for that clarification, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a very good question. Okay, we've got the motion. Thank you, Counselor Dwan. Counselor Batra.
Yes, so, when I reviewed the plan with the Santa Clara County, Nathan, my concerns were exactly the same, that this was supposed to be obviously an improvement, that's what HUD is trying to do, but it's likely to have unintended consequences because it's supposed to be budget-neutral, so taking money from one district or one ZIP code to the other one, so it increases or keeps the same cost but reduces the number of people who are going to be able to benefit. And what we need to be looking at is the ways to increase the number of people we can help because the numbers were 20,000 people get helped by HUD, and there are about 100,000 more in Santa Clara County waiting to be helped. So, we cannot afford, so I think we need to take the, HUD did not take feedback from the people in this case who were impacted, and hence, they may have looked at some other areas where it is suitable and may have missed an opportunity here. So we need to take it back to HUD, the feedback, and work with them and use all of our government contacts to be able to improve the plan, which is what their intention is, and not have this unintended consequences which are likely to come. So that's why I support the move to get this further. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cohen?
Just one point to add, it is not only District Five and Seven, because in District 10, you can look at my Via Hoffmonte area, would fall exactly in the same analogy as the District Five and Seven. So it's a broadly Santa Clara County issue, not just District Five or Seven.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Counselor Cohen?
Yeah, just, I'd like to ask a clarifying question about the overall resources. The resources pot stays the same and it's just a question of allocation. In order to be able to provide resources to people, to give them the option, which I think is valuable, of being able to have mobility and move into other parts of the county where they might not have otherwise been able to move, we've reduced the potential payout for people by as much as $500 a month in some of the lower-rent areas. So on the IGR question, I mean, I fully support pursuing this, but I think the real point is if we have, if we could get a supplement from the federal government to cover that $500 gap so that people would not have to lose that 500, I think that's the real point, because I actually think there's value in allowing people to have more mobility throughout the county and offer them the rental assistance for those areas, but without affecting people in the areas where they'd see a cut. And so I think maybe to provide that direction, I assume that that's kind of in the spirit of the motion, but I wanted to just add that to the conversation, and I do support the motion.
Yeah, good, good point. I agree with that. Preston, I have a couple of quick questions for you, if you don't mind coming back down. I think even to that point, Councilmember Cohen, it'd be interesting to know the trade-off of number of families we can help just stay housed in San Jose in lower-income census tracts, for example. So I think it's an interesting trade-off to analyze. Preston, thanks for coming back down. Couple of quick questions. I was glad to see on page 22 of the plan, the discussion of interim housing is an important part of the overall system, and the report notes predicting helping about 360 households to be served. Are any of those households that would be served at interim housing sites that we've obviously made a big investment in this strategy, as have other cities? Would any of those be in San Jose?
Yes, so, we are having conversations, well, one, you'll see a presentation on Thursday where we'll talk a little bit more about this, but we are having conversations with city and county staff about how do we partner, become a partner within the overall interim housing programs. I think we're looking at modifying a contract we currently have with the county around interim housing that would then expand into interim housing opportunities or interim housing places in the city of San Jose. So, yes.
Okay. And the 360, though, is that, is that just at Pedro Street Inn, which is operated by the county, or does that include sites in the city of San Jose?
That's a growth, that's a growth of sites into the city of San Jose operated by.
That includes growth?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as you look, as we continue this conversation between Housing Authority, county and city, and look to be flexible and support other interim housing sites, I would recommend that we not only look at the converted motels, hotels like Pacific Motor Inn, but also look at some of our, the quick-build EIHs. From our perspective, they're both very valuable. We have some dollars from the state to operate Pacific Motor Inn that we do not have for our other forms of interim housing. And so I think from a budget standpoint, we'd appreciate broadening that conversation to any of our interim units, and just want to know if you would have any concerns about looking more broadly.
I have concerns about it being called Section 8, because Section 8 has a number of rules that I think do not work with the interim housing, but if we call it local non-traditional, which is one of the Move to Work strategies, then yes, we are exploring ways that we can provide some of those operating assistance to the city. So we want to be at the table with you.
You call it whatever you want, Preston, as long as you're going to help us operate them. That's great.
Right. And of course, we want it to like be in conformance with the community plan to homelessness that matches up with, you know, use of coordinated entry, all of the things, but it's.
I think we all agree about that.
A creative way for us to be stepping in and being a partner with the city and county on a very important component of the continuum, yes.
Yeah, I know, we'd certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it. I'm not seeing any other hands. We have a motion to approve the staff rec with the additional recommendation around exploring IGR related to the maximum impact of the dollars. Tony, let's vote. Great, thank you. Okay, we're back to our regular agenda. We'll go onto item 3.1, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick report today. I'm very pleased to share that the city of San Jose was awarded 3.7 million through community project funding requests, or what is otherwise known as earmarks from the federal government. This funding furthers the city council's focus areas of increasing community safety, reducing in shelter homelessness, and cleaning up our neighborhoods. I would like to thank Congressman Jimmy Panetta for his assistance in securing a total of 2.35 million for the city of San Jose, including 1 million for the Rue Ferrari Emergency Interim Housing Expansion Project, 850,000 for the Lake Cunningham Park Revitalization Project, and 500,000 for the Blossom Hill Senior Affordable Housing Development Project. Additionally, Congressman Roe Cohna secured 850,000 for the Jackson Avenue Safety Improvement Project, and Congresswoman Anna Eschew for securing 500,000 for the Monterey Road Corridor Safety and Transit Improvement Project. These earmarks are a result of engagement with our members of Congress, and I'd like to thank our Departments of Transportation, Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, Housing, as well as the City Manager's Office of Administration, Policy and Intergovernmental Relations, and the mayor, and Councilmember Candelaus for their advocacy support. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Jennifer. That is definitely good news for our community. Thank you to our congressional delegation for looking out for San Jose. We are on to item 3.3, which is the status of open audit recommendations. And Joe, I know you have a presentation. Feel free to jump in whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Joe Roy, City Auditor. I'm here with Brittany Harvey from our office to present our report on the status of open audit recommendations as of December 31, 2023. The San Jose City Charter prescribes the duties of the City Auditor's office, including conducting city council-assigned performance audits of city service or programs to determine whether resources are being used in an economical, effective, and efficient manner, established objectives are being met, and desired results are being achieved. At the core of our work is conducting performance audits, which include recommendations to correct deficiencies, strengthen accountability, and improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and equity of city programs. Over the past 10 years, our office has made 669 audit recommendations covering many aspects of the city operations, including public-facing services such as those provided by the police department, Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, Planning, Building, Code Enforcement, and other departments. We have all conducted many audits related to support services provided by the Finance Department, Public Works, the Information Technology Department, and others. We monitor progress toward implementing recommendations from past performance audits and provide regular reports on the status of these recommendations, and this report provides the most recent status update. This report shows the progress on 191 audit recommendations, 26 of which were from audits issued or accepted by the city council between July 1 and December 31 of 2023. Since our last update, 39 audit recommendations were implemented or closed, and currently another 112 have been partly implemented by departments. As I noted earlier, over the past 10 years, our office has made 669 audit recommendations. Of those recommendations, 79% have been implemented or closed, and 64% made in the past five years have been implemented or closed. To give a sense of the breadth of the work that's been done to implement recommendations in the past six months, we just wanted to highlight a few. The city finalized an agreement for tow administrator services with an outside vendor for city-generated toes. The terms of the agreement address multiple recommendations from our 2018 audit of towing services, including an escalating penalty structure for contractors not completing toes, requirements around service delivery, record-keeping, and other aspects of the program. The City Manager's Office, along with the City Attorney's Office and the Office of Employee Relations, finalized a new open government policy within the city policy manual that creates more transparency around the city's consolidated open government and ethics provisions. That was from our audit of open government in 2017. The Police Department reports taking steps to allow trained call-takers to focus on emergency and non-emergency calls in the communication center by distributing a report, taking responsibilities to officers on modified duty, retiree rehires, and in part-time employees where possible. That was a recommendation from our audit of 911311 back in 2019. Finance Department worked with an outside vendor and online payment processor to allow utility customers to receive electronic billing statements online. That came from a Muni water billing customer service audit. And lastly, PBCE or Planning, Building, Code Enforcement implemented multiple recommendations from our 2022 audit of the secret review process, including developing procedures that address communication with stakeholders and expectations of different parties within the process, and setting baseline project review targets by type of project. There are 152 recommendations still pending, 112 of which are partly implemented, as I said earlier. As shown here in our online dashboard, we classify recommendations by intended outcome. The intent of some recommendations is to improve transparency and accountability. An example from a recent audit relates to revising and updating performance measures in the Housing Department and audit we completed last fall. We also have many recommendations designed to improve operational efficiency and overall service delivery. Between July 1 and December 31 of last year, we released audits of the Integrated Waste Management Enforcement Program, an interim report on the Office of Retirement Services' administrative policies and procedures, and an audit of the residential building permit process. We had multiple recommendations in those areas or in those audits to improve service delivery and operational efficiency. Many of our recommendations are risk-based and are aimed at securing city assets. Examples here from past audits include updating the city's P-card policy, better inventorying of assets, city assets that is, and similar types of recommendations. Lastly, some recommendations are intended to address equity concerns. An example from the residential building permit audit was for planning, building, code enforcement to take steps to address language accessibility by including additional translation options for sjpermits.org and its phone lines, as well as developing a process to identify and prioritize vital documents for translation in accordance with the city's language equity policy and guidelines. In 2018, the city council directed the city manager to identify and prioritize work on 12 outstanding audit recommendations while continuing to make progress on addressing and working with the city auditor to close out other open audit recommendations. I'll quickly run through the current 12 priority recommendations. The three in the area of potential budgetary savings include improving overtime controls in the police department, identifying uses and developing procedures for spending in-lue fees for tree plantings, and adding community service officers to address lower priority police calls. The three recommendation priorities in the area of operational efficiency include developing citywide contract management policies, eliminating the construction and demolition diversion deposit, and adopting city policies and procedures by retirement services. Progress has been made on each of these to varying degrees. I do want to point out that one of these was fully implemented, as noted in the slide. The City Manager's Office, in coordination with the City Attorney's Office, finalized a contract creation, administration, and management resource. a Contract Creation, Administration, and Management Resource Guide for use by city staff that covers various elements of contract monitoring and management. The three priority recommendations in the area of citywide security risk mitigation include revising the city's P-card policy or procurement card policy, developing citywide administrative guidelines or procedures for managing federal grants, and fully documenting COVID-related procurements of food distribution contracts. And lastly, the three priorities in the area of improved service delivery include improving governance around information technology systems, clarifying massage program roles and responsibilities between the Police Department and the code enforcement, and procuring a software solution and provide sufficient supervisory staff to support wage compliance review. Similar to the prior slide, these recommendations are in varying stages of implementation. The audit of information technology noted in the slide had five recommendations around the governance of the city's information technology environment. One of the recommendations was implemented in a prior reporting period, and the remaining four were implemented during this reporting period. More information about all open audit recommendations is available in the appendices of the report, as well as in our online dashboard, a screenshot of which you can see in the slide. With that, I'd like to thank all the city departments for their efforts to implement audit recommendations and for their assistance in compiling this report. I'd also like to thank my staff for working with the departments to document and verify the information in the report. Happy to answer any questions and ask that you accept the report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate the update on open audit recommendations. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yeah, for 3.3, Blair. I just couldn't find the card.
Hi, Blair Beeman. It's good to be back. As a person of the public, it would have been nice to speak on Lake Cunningham issues from the City Manager's Report. Hopefully, the public can be involved in the City's Manager's Report in the future. Hopefully, we can work on that together, hopefully. For this item, thank you for it. The city auditor's report, yearly report, and monthly reports is always a time that has just got a ton of city projects in it, and it gives community and yourselves just a lot of time to talk about issues within it. For myself, you have police staffing issues that have been really studied a lot, and you had your budget meeting a few weeks ago. Big public turnout on a lot of issues that included, as city elders want to talk about the importance of more policing, staffing, more police and administration, you know, community is really considering the concepts of what can be mental health addressing of community issues and how to police. And I hope that can be taken seriously and really looked into, and it could be time to really work towards those good goals. And if not this year, it will be coming around the corner. And I think it's creative and hopeful, and I think we're interested in it. I hope we can learn how to talk more openly about it. We only may have, you know, at most 10 to new patrol officers and 50 administration. That's my guess. Good luck to really explore, you know, other ways of future of community and policing. And with that said, to also finally note, as we honored Cesar Chavez and his work as towards nonviolence and peace, good luck how we can do that here in our auditing department. I have five seconds left. Good luck how we can do that in our auditing department and in our...
Mute.
Okay. Are we back to council? Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Duane, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joe, and your team for, you know, doing a great work of auditing, which helped the efficiency of our city and provide better customer service. One of the items that I like to address is I commend the effort that clarifying the massage program roles and responsibilities between the Police Department and code enforcement. Anything that we can do to streamline and crack down on the illicit illegal activity, which have a huge effect on our community, especially some of these massage parlors are front for human trafficking and prostitution. And I, you know, I ran across a constituent that reported a situation regarding human trafficking and prostitution. And I immediately, you know, had a conversation with Chief Mata so we can take action and look into it. And unfortunately, District 7, especially on Tolly Row, there's from coffee shop to massage parlor to, as a front to a lot of these illegal activity. And I hope, as city as a whole, we put a lot of emphasis on stopping these illegal activity, which not only talking about human trafficking, sex trafficking, wage theft, and oppression to crime to drug and illegal gambling in a lot of these places. And I just want to say thank you for that, and I just want to move to accept your report.
Thank you, Councilmember Duane. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, and your team for always having a really informative audit report and your pragmatic approach to what we see and what we should be doing and how we can improve the city processes. But I have a couple of questions. In looking at the open audit, there are a few things that have been open for a long time, years, 10-plus years. One in particular is, okay, 10, I lied, seven and a half years. It's the construction and demolition diversion that was delayed from March 2017. There's another one related to the software solutions for Office of Equality Assurance that was initially delayed from 2018. And then the longest one has to do with the procurement, the P-cards, as we call them, the procurement cards, that was scheduled for 2011, that all supposedly have target dates in June 2024. So I'm a little concerned about the length of delays, and then these numbers, these dates that say these things are going to be completed. How comfortable are you, or maybe I should speak to the staff who's responsible for making sure they come to compliance, how comfortable are you they're going to meet those timeframes? Because these are long delays that must be costing us liability and money. And that's just three.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So each one has a different story about it. I'll work backwards from the ones, just giving you an example. So the procurement card policy, we initially did an audit back in 2010, I believe, that had a series of recommendations. With that one, we added it to our work plan on a recurring basis. And unfortunately, what happened with the Finance Department is by the time they got done with the first set of recommendations, we did another P-card policy and added some more recommendations, and it kind of followed that cycle, and the things kind of got backed up. And this is one that I'm comfortable with the current date for June 2024, because we've seen the most updated versions of it, and we think they're almost there.
Councilmember Foley? It's on my desk.
Okay.
Good. So this will not appear on your report next?
It will appear on the report as completed. And there's about eight or nine recommendations all related to it. The construction demolition diversion piece, spent a little bit of time, a couple bodies of work were going on, trying to, in my understanding, from looking backwards in the history, is there was two pieces. One was reaching out to people who had had a deposit on, to see who needed to get a refund, and then trying to figure out how that work would roll into a different, into other bodies of work. And so the current status, and this is one that the administration asked us to put as a priority, because it was on their list to try to get done in a short, within the next whatever number of months, and they're going to roll it into kind of how they're going to be implementing some Cal Green program work. And I think, so I'm comfortable with that one. The procurement of the software solution, that one, there was a few different pieces to that recommendation. I think it was parts A through C and parts, there's only one piece of it that's remaining, and it was, they went through a couple different cycles of different software solutions they were looking at. So those are just three, and sometimes it just takes a little time, and there's a matter of prioritization, so each one has its own little story. And hopefully, I didn't misrepresent that story to the departments out there, but those are my memories.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I highlight those because, first of all, you're reporting to us that they're still open, or a portion of them is still open, and I appreciate getting the report to see what is still available. And some of these may have high dollars that could be refunded to us, or that we're expending in an inefficient system, so as soon as we correct it or modify it, we can save money. And when we're talking about a structural deficit, that's really important. So I appreciate the explanation, and thank you for that, and I look forward to always seeing these open audit reports and seeing the ones that have been completed. And I know you do a lot of audits, so every time you do an audit, more things get added to this, and things come off the list. So we depend on you and your team to come forward with these audits that are really helpful in analyzing the organization and making sure that we're spending our tax dollars wisely, efficiently, and effectively for the benefit of our residents and our employees. So I thank you for the work that you do and for this report, and that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Jennifer.
Yeah, I would, thank you, Councilmember Foley. I just want to add that I really appreciate the departments who have really asked them all to step up and really concentrate on the closing out of the audit recommendations, and Joe knows that. I really value the check and balance approach that we have, and they are all really doing their good work on this, and that's why you're seeing the improvement in the closing of the recommendations. So thanks to all the senior staff and their staff within the departments.
Thanks, Jennifer. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. My question was around sort of the same theme. I noticed that some were, you know, delayed, and I'm curious, I guess the question I have for you, Joe, sort of jokingly, is do you know the ins and outs of each one of these outstanding recommendations? It's amazing to me that you can respond, and I'm going to have a question about one, so I'm hoping you do. But how do you manage the sort of volume of information?
Well, the way we work in the office is we divide it up within the office to all the different auditors who take on a body of them. Part of my memory is that I have been in the office for 15 years, and so I've touched all of these in some respects. My memory is, of them, is the best within our office, but I also don't have the same depth of knowledge that the staff in the departments have.
Are there any audit recommendations that have outlived you and have been around longer than you've been in the office?
There was one that I inherited in 2019 that went back to 2000, but we closed that one out.
Okay, well, good. Well, I'm glad. But I had one specific question, so, because it seems like you have a sense as to what's gone, what the issues have been as it relates to specific audits, recommendations. There was one I had a question about. It's the one, it's on page four, potential budgetary savings revenue generation. It's the one adding community service officers to address lower priority calls. And then at the end, it says, finally, the Department Plan's developed guidelines to distribute more CSOs more equitably across the city was recommended in the audit target originally was, well, the target date is March 2025, but it was delayed from June 2023. And I'm curious if you can speak to that one, because that one comes to mind as very...
I can speak to the broad recommendation. I can't speak specifically to the delay piece of it. So the recommendation really was, there was two recommendations. It was from our police staffing audit from 2021, and just give me one.
I think there's someone coming down.
Yeah, so the recommendations are really two pieces. One is looking at kind of the calls that are available for, that CSOs could be responding to, and the other one was making sure that those calls that they are allowed to be, that they're being dispatched as appropriate to those calls. So there was kind of two different pieces to it. I think that is the best way to describe it.
Okay. If you have anything to add, that'd be great, because I think, I suspect I'm not the only one up here that had a question about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Brian Schapp, Deputy Chief with the Police Department. Thank you for the question. Absolutely, we are working on that recommendation actively right now. We are, hopefully, we'll have a report done, a recommendation at the end of the year to look at expanding the duties of the CSOs. That's obviously a meet and confer issue with both unions, both the POA and MEF, but we are looking at that actively. We hope to have that done by the end of the year. Both that, as well as the 911 audit report, kind of touches on that as well. With regard to recruiting for CSOs, we're actively recruiting with CSOs. I can give you the numbers if you like.
Yeah, please.
In terms of how many we have, right now, we have 67 authorized CSOs. On top of that, six senior CSOs that work in the field with them, and one supervising CSO. Of those 67, 59 are currently filled. Five of the seniors are currently filled. The supervisor position, he is due to retire next month, so that will be vacant next month. So of those eight vacancies for the CSOs, we're actively recruiting, we had hiring boards today, as a matter of fact, and we're looking at seven applicants in the process right now, so we hope to get some of those filled very quickly.
All right, perfect. And this, by the way, just so you know, this recommendation or this audit sort of finding stood out to me, just given that we, I think we all acknowledge we don't have enough officers, and CFOs play a very critical role to filling some of those gaps. And I know the officers really value them and some of the work that they do to freeze them up to actually go solve these crimes and stuff, so thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
If I could add really quick, just going back to Councilmember Foley's question, that's another, you know, why does something get delayed? If there's anything related to meet and confer or some of these other processes, it could be RFPs, so some of those things kind of can delay implementation as well.
Deputy Chief, if you don't mind, one more question. Councilmember, you were done. I also wanted to ask about CSOs, and Councilman Jimenez more or less covered my questions, but I was wondering, and we can follow up at a later time if you don't have this handy, how are we doing in terms of just the recruitment side specifically? I'm just curious to hear, when we have academies each year, how many slots do we have for CSOs versus how many are filled? Do we know, how's the washout rate? I'm just curious about specifically, are we able to attract and train and retain those candidates?
Yeah, recruiting is ongoing every year for our vacancies. Like I said, we have, we currently have eight vacancies, but we just did a hiring board today with seven prospective applicants. But there's a whole nother hiring pool that we try to draw from, so as we put police recruits through the academy and through the training program, sometimes it becomes apparent that that job specifically may not be for them, so we'll look to try and focus them into the CSO role afterwards. And conversely, sometimes we'll try and draw from the CSO pool to build up prospective recruits. So it's, that pipeline tends to go both ways, and so I'd say that the recruiting is ongoing, and we're pretty close to being fully staffed with a CSO program.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for highlighting that. Councilmember Jimenez? All right, I don't see any other hands, and I believe, did we have a motion to approve? We did, didn't we? Okay, great. Tony, let's vote. Thank you. All right, I know we have a lot of, a number of folks here for 8.2. We did agendize it for 3 PM, so if we, I think we can probably do 6.1 fairly quickly, and then we'll move to item 8.2. So let's go to item 6.1. And there's, I'm sorry, there is no staff presentation. Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to public comment.
Blair?
I'll move approval while Blair makes his way up here.
Second.
And being from San Diego, they're working on bond ideas for the future of environmental projects. The sewer and waste system, water system funding from federal agencies at this time has been a lot of help to California cities. To ask yourselves, will there need to be a future of bond measures for San Jose about climate change issues? I don't know if this sort of item is at time. It seems relevant and appropriate.
This is a specific application, if you have any comments on that application.
Understood. But I feel there's a certain relevance to mention that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Batra? And just to clarify, I heard a motion from Councilor Jimenez, second by Foley, I believe. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember.
I want to make comment about when this item came in front of the community economic development thing. We made sure that there was a local preference to this one, I think. Let me just make sure that we are on the right, Mayor, are we on 8.2?
We're on item 6.1.
You didn't move it to the 8.2.
No, I noted that it's agendized for 3:00 PM, so we're going to just take up 6.1 now, and then we'll move on.
Okay. I do not want to make any comments on this one, so I take my hand down.
Okay. Great. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
I'm still waiting on one. There we go. Motion passes unanimously.
We still have a few minutes. I suspect the other outstanding items will take a bit of time. I think we'll have discussion. Looks like there are staff presentations. Nora, how do you feel about starting, or should we take a five-minute recess?
Is there a...
Time's certain, 3:00 PM.
Yeah, there is a time certain, so I think we should wait.
So we'll take a five-minute recess. We are coming back, and we're on to item 8.2, anti-displacement tenant preference and neighborhood tenant preference for affordable housing draft program status report. It's a mouthful. Just before the staff presentation, due to the very high volume of speaker request cards, which is a beautiful thing, we are going to limit public comment to one minute per speaker. We'll do that for the rest of the meeting. We have to also get to a couple of other important items this evening. But let me turn to staff for the presentation. Kristin? Or, sorry, Rachel, whoever's kicking off. Apologies.
Thank you. Rachel Vanderveen, Assistant Director of the Housing Department, and we're very pleased to be here this afternoon with all of you and from the community and the mayor and council. So today, we are here to present to you an anti-displacement tenant preference and neighborhood tenant preference. And I just want to say that this is just a really important policy for our community, for our work, for all of the investment that is made citywide in affordable housing. And so we're just very pleased to be here today. This is an item that has, was really born out of our anti-displacement strategy, and so again, we're just proud to be here today. I'm joined by Kristin Clements, our Division Manager of our policy group, and Chris Alexander, who has been a very key partner in the attorney's office, who's done an immense amount of work in crafting this for you today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you, Rachel, and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I also want to thank first our retiring city attorney partner, who started this work with me way back when, Shasta Green, who is so knowledgeable, we're going to miss her presence so much at the city, so I wanted to give her attribution. Today, we're here to present the proposed program for tenant preferences to help mitigate displacement. We wanted to note this is a program specifically for restricted affordable housing properties. Thanks. We've been working on developing this program for quite a while. Council voted to make this a priority in 2017, and staff started work on it in 2018. Staff also joined with three community-based organizations to join a national learning network sponsored by PolicyLink about displacement and how we could help fight it. This work led to the community strategy report that's pictured in the lower left, and tenant preferences were identified in that report as a priority for the community. This was especially true as we saw the lease-up of Quetzal Gardens, which is the green property in the upper right. It's a beautiful property sponsored by RCD, a nonprofit developer in the East Bay. RCD worked really collaboratively with community stakeholders in the Mayfair neighborhood to get residents ready to apply to the property once it opened up. And unfortunately, it became the poster child for why do we need a program like this? The project got 3,000 applications for 42 affordable units available to the general public, so there's more than 70 to one demand. And that was despite all of the efforts to help local residents get in. Unfortunately, 350 people applied for Mayfair, but zero got in on the first lease-up. So this shows the need for us to think about a new approach to supporting San Jose's vulnerable residents to access affordable housing. As Rachel noted, also, this work has been brought into the housing element, its strategy S-20, and it's been informed by other cities' preferences, including San Francisco's, Oakland's, and Berkeley, and it is structured to be consistent with state and federal fair housing law. Thanks. We have several goals for doing this work. We want to help prevent displacement of lower-income renters from our city and increase the likelihood that they are able to stay here in San Jose so they can enjoy the benefits of the investments as our community grows. We want to make the best use of the limited affordable housing stock that we have, that we have put money into, and we, of course, want to increase fair housing choices for our current residents. We're hoping that, you know, greater access to affordable housing can help relieve some overcrowding in our community and help lower-income residents access rents that are a better fit for their incomes. This is in the public interest to keep residents existing community-based safety nets while they are having their housing stabilized. I'll just also note that this program enables us to affirmatively further fair housing because it addresses displacement and affordable housing needs in our community, and it advances fair housing choices for our lower-income renters. We wanted to include some data that reminds us that displacement risk due to high housing costs is not racially neutral. It disproportionately affects Hispanic and Black renters in San Jose. This slide shows San Jose Census data from 2016 to 2020 in a way that HUD pulls it specially. The orange bars show the percent of renters from each racial group that experience cost burden or pay for more than, spend more than 30% of their income on rent. And the blue bars show severe housing cost burden for those paying more than 50% of their income for rent. When you look at the Hispanic bars on the first set on the left, you can see that a total of 53% of our Hispanic renters are either rent-burdened or severely rent-burdened. And then the black, non-Hispanic bars, the fourth one in from the left, they total 54% being rent-burdened or severely rent-burdened. When you look at the last set to the right, the citywide all races, citywide, 46% of all renters are rent-burdened or severely rent-burdened, which is a scary statistic. And, but you could see that those two other groups are disproportionately high to the citywide average. And if this chart had room to disaggregate the Asian-American bars, you'd also see that the Southeast Asian community is comparable to the Black and Hispanic numbers with disproportionate burden. This data reminds us it's important for the city to help mitigate risks of displacement for lower-income renters in order to promote greater racial equity in our city. To create lawful tenant preferences to help mitigate displacement, these are the steps we've taken. First, the city sponsored, co-sponsored Senate Bill 649 at the state legislature, which was signed by the governor in 2022 and took effect January 1st last year. We sponsored this new law to recognize residents who were at risk of displacement as a specific When you recognize the population like this, it enables affordable housing properties that use bonds or tax credits for financing to implement this type of housing preferences. So I wanted to thank our attorney, Chris, for helping draft the legislation, and also acknowledge the Cisay Puerta Collective and the Housing Action Coalition, the bill's other two cosponsors. Staff created extensive quantitative analysis called disparate impact analysis, using models that were designed by San Francisco and also used by the city of Oakland. The purpose of the analysis is to ensure the preferences were designed to be consistent with fair housing laws, and to make sure they don't unintentionally cause a disparate impact to any groups based on their protected status. When we say protected classes, we're referring to groups protected under federal and state fair housing laws. Our analysis revealed that the program as it is designed is consistent with fair housing law. Staff will periodically... law. Staff will periodically update its analysis to make sure the program is administered correctly and remains consistent with fair housing law. And in addition, we realized that we needed a technology solution to help implement this program because data basing eligibility based on census tract data does not match applicants' addresses. And so we needed a system to help us match those two things and make it easier for everyone to use the preferences. So we worked with our consultant, Exegy, that created San Jose's Affordable Housing Portal, called Doorway, to create a geolocation feature that does this matching between address and census tract. Of course, we need the city council's approval to run this program, and if approved, we are going to seek state approval from the state Housing and Community Development Department for their approval as a lender so that these preferences can be implemented in state-funded affordable housing along with funding from our own city. This diagram shows that the first type of eligibility criteria would be for residents in high-displacement census tracts. This, the first category of two, would require 20% set aside for residents that are prioritized as living in subject census tracts. The these tracts are colored from the Urban Displacement Project Maps of San Jose. That's out of the University of California, Berkeley. Displacement risk here means that a census tract has characteristics, according to the UDP model, that are strongly correlated with greater low-income population loss than gain. So in other words, more lower-income households are leaving these areas than are moving in over time. The census tracts in orange are identified as definitively experiencing displacement of extremely low and very low-income households. The tracts in red are identified as definitively experiencing displacement of extremely low, very low, and lower-income households. The pink areas are where people are likely being displaced. The Urban Displacement Project says their data is a conservative estimate of low-income loss, and it's the residents living in these areas that we want to prioritize if they choose to apply, as this diagram shows, to affordable housing properties anywhere in the city for properties that are subject to the preferences. Next slide. This is in words what I just described. For folks that are living in these high-displacement census tracts, we would be asking 20% of units set aside for applicants from these areas that are lower-income. And the goal here is to increase housing choices for lower-income residents who choose to seek housing near where they currently live, or maybe in another neighborhood somewhere else in the city. The second eligibility criteria for the preference program is for residents living in the same neighborhoods as a given affordable housing property. Excuse me. We're defining neighborhood here to be a city council district. We tested different geographies and proximities to our affordable housing pipeline, but council district was the only one that passed disparate impact analysis in all 10 council districts. So this defines 15% of affordable apartments would be set aside for folks living in the same council districts. And this is responding to the many voices in the community that said they strongly wish to remain in their current neighborhoods, near friends and family, while they stabilize their housing. Here's a diagram of all of the things that folks would be able to keep in place for their social networks, their education, for their children, their friends and family, their daycare arrangements, if they were able to stay close to home where they live now. For applicability to properties, there would be several that would be subject. First, we would be applying to any city-funded affordable housing project. And this includes both new construction, but also acquisition and rehab. We coordinate with property owners to apply the preferences to all projects that are in process as of the effective date of the resolution, which is upon the city council's approval. And preferences will also apply to existing city-funded affordable properties in our portfolio. If those properties come back to us on a deal-by-deal basis and ask for terms of the city loan to be altered, and their documents can get updated at that point. They would also apply to anything with a city-negotiated development agreement. And note that because senior housing, seniors is such a large population, they would apply to senior housing, but it does not apply to any other affordable units that house special-needs populations. It is just for those otherwise available to the general public. We estimate that approximately 415 apartments could be set aside for preference applicants in the next one to two years. This is a visual of how the preference components would work together. If the blue circle is one affordable housing property, 35% in aggregate would be set aside. That's comprised of 15% for those living in the same council district and 20 for those in high-displacement areas. Note that we're also requiring the set aside to have a, what we call a commensurate mix, of apartment types as the rest of the property, because we don't want, for instance, all studios to be the ones, the units that are set aside. We've done quite a bit of engagement of both implementing stakeholders and then the general public over the years. We engaged affordable property managers and owners and tenants and tenant stakeholders and incorporated their feedback in the design. We actually started doing outreach for this in 2018 and 19, and then had to go back as data got updated and to recreate the preferences while we were working on legislation. But we had worked with Somos Mayfair and Cisay Puerta Collective to attend their meetings and to get feedback from residents as to what they would find important as we administer these preferences. And then, of course, more recently, we conducted outreach between summer 2023 and January 2024. We had over 240 attendees at all of the formal meetings. In the recent past, some of them may have attended more than one meeting. And we did revise the framework based on their feedback. Wanted to note, one important piece of feedback was that the program allow applicants to provide alternative documentation for where they live, their current address, and their income, because not everybody has a signed lease agreement or a utility bill. So we're going to create a list of acceptable alternative documentation for the program per property manager's requests as well. They'd like it written down for them. And they're going to go into the administrative guidelines that we'll take to the public for comment. We're also requiring that property managers advertise that they take these alternative documentations, because that in and of itself removes a barrier, because folks may not want to apply if they think they could not get accepted. So that's also important. I just wanted to note also, we took this proposal, can you go back, to commission last year? The commissioner supported the proposal. And also, we worked, we have been working for the last couple of months to test the geolocation feature in the Doorway portal. And we're doing that work together with Berkeley and Oakland and Exegy, our consultant. We also wanted to note just that Doorway is accessible in four different, our top four languages. If people prefer to apply on the system or prefer to have paper applications, Doorway is flexible. And we think one of the good points of putting forward the tenant preferences is that it will create another incentive for all property owners to list the properties in Doorway. It is not so much that they need to do it except for the preferences, it's really for the public and reducing barriers for them to access affordable housing. So for next steps to implement the program, we would immediately start to phase in the preferences for current and future affordable housing transactions. We have the pipeline list already. We'll create administrative guidelines. We'll seek public comment on that. Finalize loan document language that enables properties to implement it and feel safe about that. We'll create training and tools for affordable housing properties and also for city internal staff, who will integrate the preference into new transactions, and then we'll monitor compliance. We'll be starting to engage and educate the community this spring and then in the summer and beyond. And we'd like to do that work together with community partners, particularly in higher displacement census tracts, and also in neighborhoods where forthcoming affordable properties are coming forward. And finally, we'll be seeking the state's approval of the program as a lender so that any deal with state funding in it can still be using, can be authorized to use the preferences. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. And I want to thank the Housing Department and everyone on city staff who's worked really hard over quite a few years now, as you outlined, to bring this local tenant preference to fruition. I think it's going to be a very valuable tool in our efforts to combat displacement, keep working families in San Jose, keep some of our most vulnerable children here in their schools and their daycare centers, and keep our community intact, keep communities together. So I know it's taken a lot of work on staff's part to navigate the various components of this, how to implement it. I also want to thank Senator Cortezi, who helped pave the way in Sacramento, without whom I don't think we'd be hearing this item right now. So many partners came together, including a number of tremendous community partners, to get this going. I look forward to the council discussion. Let's go to public comment. Again, we're going to have to limit to one minute. I know there's going to be a lot of enthusiasm and excitement, which is great, so that speak, so that we can hear from everyone and hear from everyone equally, and so that folks can hear when Tony calls you down. I want to just encourage everybody to signal your support quietly. You can make, you know, wave your hands or hold up your signs, but we need to be able to hear from Tony, so I just ask that people refrain from cheering and making a lot of noise. Thank you very much. Tony, go ahead.
Okay, when I call your name, please come on down. First person to the mic, go ahead and speak. It's no particular order. For everybody else, there are seats in the front row that you can sit on while you wait. So I have Letitia, Ms. Rayan Mendoza, Tony Romero, Gabriel Manrique, Magdalena, and Hector Hernandez. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Letitia Escorcia, and I'm here to ask for your support for this policy, because I have family who has been displaced, and I still have two kids at home that soon they will get, you know, the wings to go. And I don't want to be on those statistics on the risk of displacement. So please, your vote yes to the preference, tenant preference. And also, if there can be some, something for the owners, the management, or the stakeholders to honor the points on this tenant preference, please. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Magdalena Duran. I'm part of Vecinos Activos. I'm here again to support the tenant preference policy. For years, we have been waiting for council members and our mayor to sign a policy that benefits our community. Signing this policy will help our community to stay in the neighborhood where they have been living for years. Also, it will help the kids to stay in the place where they have been raised, but overall, our people won't be with the fear to be displaced at any moment. So, but it wouldn't be possible without your support. So please sign our petition, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ms. Rayan Mendoza. I'm the Welcome Manager at Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. It's an honor to be here today. We are here today to urge the mayor and the city council to unanimously pass the policy that we're asking today. Tenant preference will be a huge step for addressing displacement in a city, and it will have a significant impact in the Mayfair neighborhood and the east side of San Jose, our community that we serve. We need to use all our resources and tools to stop displacement in our communities. This is a call for all of us to commit, to continue to learn how to be better stewards of the land they inhabit. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Tony Romero. I am with Latinos United for a New America. I am here to support the tenants' preference policy and encourage the council to adopt this policy. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities. The San Jose City Council has the opportunity to address the root causes of our housing crisis by approving the tenants' preference policy today. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters, increase access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and cost. Also, I encourage you to include language that directs property managers to accept alternative documents as part of the application process, documents such as IT number, school records, medical documents. That way, more of our community can apply for these opportunities. I believe we all share a common goal, to create stable communities by allowing San Jose households to stay in their community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Gabriel Manrique. I'm a community organizer with Luna. I'm here this afternoon to speak in support of the approval of the tenant preference policy. Our community is continuously advocating for affordable housing to prevent the displacement of working families, especially people of color. In advancing the tenant preference policy, it will benefit the people that historically have been disempowered by our system. The tenant preference policy is the first step the city can take to improve housing stability and affordability to prevent families from being uprooted from San Jose, the city they call home. Additionally, include language that directs property managers to accept alternative documents as part of the application processes, such as IT number, school records, medical documents, tax returns, et cetera. For those reasons, we urge council members to support the approval of the tenant preference policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. And while he makes his way to the microphone, I'd like to call the next five. These speakers have indicated they need interpretation. I have Carla Coyoc, Norma Chavez, Soiza Del Real, Lena Marcela, and it looks like a starched Aziz Zenaidis Munoz. Zenaida Munoz. Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Hector Hernandez. I'm a community leader with Luna. I'm here this afternoon in support of the approval of the tenant preference policy. The lack of affordable housing is forcing the working-class communities to be displaced from their homes. With the approval of the tenant preference policy, the city of San Jose will increase opportunities for low-income households to stay in their neighborhoods by allocating units for those in need. In addition, also include the language that directs property managers to accept alternative documents such as application process, such as IT numbers, school records, medical documents, tax returns, et cetera. So please don't postpone the tenant preference policy any longer, and please approve, council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carla. Soy voluntaria con Luna.
Good afternoon. My name is Carla, and I am a volunteer with Luna.
Hoy es el día en que queremos escuchar un sí a la póliza de preferencia de los inquilinos. a la póliza de preferencia de los inquilinos, para que los residentes de bajos ingresos tengan acceso a viviendas accesibles.
Today is the day that we want to hear a yes for the anti-displacement tenant preference, so that the tenants with low incomes can have access to affordable housing.
Mejorando su estabilidad y asegurando su costo de vida sin miedo a perder su hogar.
Improving their way of life and making sure that they're not afraid of losing their home.
Permitir reservar una parte de las unidades en desarrollo de vivienda accesible para residentes que no tienen la necesidad de salir de sus vecindarios.
Allowed to reserve some part of the units in the developments of affordable housing, so that residents don't have the need to get out of their neighborhoods.
Los que han habitado por muchos años, pedimos ahora viviendas para todos y sí a la póliza de derechos de inquilinos. Gracias.
In which they have lived for a long time, we asked a yes for the policy, and so that everybody has housing. Yes to the tenant rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Zenaida Munoz, voluntaria con Luna.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Zenaida Munoz. I'm a member of Luna.
Los residentes de San Jose han abogado fuertemente en contra del desplazamiento de nuestras comunidades.
Residents in San Jose have advocated strongly against the anti-displacement of our communities.
El Ayuntamiento de San Jose tiene ahora la oportunidad de que cada inquilino asegure un hogar para su familia.
The city council of San Jose now has the opportunity so that every tenant can secure a home for their own family.
Y disminuir la crisis de vivienda que estamos enfrentando, aprobando hoy la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos.
And decrease the crisis of housing that now we are facing. Approving today the tenant preference policy.
Esta política nos permitirá prevenir el desplazamiento de los inquilinos de bajos ingresos.
This policy will prevent the displacement of tenants, of low-income tenants.
Necesitamos dejar de prolongar la crisis inmobiliaria. Queremos escuchar sí a la preferencia de inquilinos.
Let's stop prolonging the housing crisis. We want to hear a yes to the tenant preference policy.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Norma Chavez.
My name is Norma Chavez.
Y soy de Vecinos Activos, de la comunidad de la agencia Somos Mayfair.
And I am a member of Vecinos Activos of Mayfair.
Solamente aquí estoy para pedirles, por favor, humildemente, que apoyen la póliza de preferencia de inquilino.
I am here to humbly ask you to please approve the tenant preference policy.
Para que nuestros hijos, familia, y amigos no seamos desplazados tan fácilmente.
So that our children, families, and our friends are not displaced so easily.
Aparte que a nuestros hijos les afecta emocionalmente estar viviendo los desplazamientos y adaptarse cada vez que uno se mueve a su comunidad.
Aside from that, our children are affected emotionally every time that we are displaced and we have to be changing from one community to another.
Y para eso les pido, por favor, que pasen hoy la póliza para tener una comunidad más digna, más segura, y más emocionalmente para nuestros hijos para aprender más fácilmente.
And so today I'm asking you to please pass the policy so that we can have a more dignified, secure, and emotionally stable environment for our children. Please pass the policy.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, honorables alcalde, miembros de consejo de la ciudad de San Jose, y a todo quien nos acompaña hoy.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, council members, members of the community that are here together today.
Mi nombre es Lina Marcela Rodríguez Córdoba, y soy miembro de Amigos de Guadalupe.
My name is Lina Marcela Rodríguez Córdoba, and I am a member of Amigos de Guadalupe.
Centro de Justicia y Empoderamiento.
The Justice and Empowerment Center.
Los residentes de San Jose han estado abogando para evitar más desplazamiento de nuestra comunidad.
Residents in San Jose have been advocating to stop more displacements in our community.
Es ahí de la importancia de la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos. Por eso estoy aquí, dando mi voto de confianza.
That is the importance of the anti-displacement tenant preference, and that's the reason why I'm here, to request for your vote.
Mi esposo, mi hijo, y yo vivimos en un refugio bajo el amparo de Amigos de Guadalupe en la espera de poder tener una oportunidad de vivienda accesible.
My husband, my son, and I live in a, live in a place provided by the Amigos de Guadalupe, so that we can, so that we can, while we have an opportunity to have affordable housing.
Vivir un día a día con incertidumbre, con miedo, que quizás el día de mañana seremos desplazados por falta del apoyo de nuestro gobierno.
We live day-to-day with uncertainty, afraid that perhaps one day we will be displaced due to the lack of support from our own government.
Necesitamos un sí para la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos, porque sí se puede.
We need a yes for the preference of the anti-displacement tenant, for the anti-displacement tenant preference, because yes, we can.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call the next set. I have Dilsa Gonzalez, Fernando Fernández, Abigail Hudson, and Emily Ann Ramos. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, alcalde y miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Soiza Del Real. Soy organizador comunitario en Vegilution.
Good afternoon, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Soiza Del Real. I'm a community organizer at Vegilution.
Vengo a pedir su apoyo a la póliza de preferencia inquilinos. Tener una seguridad de vivienda es un derecho.
I'm coming here to ask for your support for the tenant preference policy, because having housing security is a right.
Mi comunidad y yo necesitamos vivir con dignidad y donde pertenecemos.
My community and I need to live with dignity and where we belong.
Gracias. Vote en sí, sí se puede.
Thank you. Vote yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Next speaker. Since I called a couple people who got misfiled in 8.2, again, that's Dilsa Gonzalez, Emily Ann Ramos, Satali Martinez, Maria Teresa Munoz, and Esmeralda Varelas. Go ahead.
I got them. Great. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the city council, Emily Ann Ramos on behalf of SB@Home and our members in strong support of the tenant preference policy. It has been a long journey to get here with the community, and we sent a letter that goes into more detail on the history and the outreach, but here are some points I want to highlight. So this is an innovative policy that creates a direct connection between the city's investment in affordable housing production, sustained community stability, and targeted anti-displacement efforts in neighborhoods where displacement risks are the greatest. Because these targeted tools work by leveraging affordable housing production, the city must continue to invest in affordable housing development to maximize the efficacy of this ordinance. We also want to support proactive and affirmative commitments to ensuring access, outreach, and opportunity for community members applying to affordable housing so that this program can meet its full intent and potential. We appreciate the acknowledgement of this in the memorandum submitted by council members Ortiz, Torres, Candelas, and Cohen. Thank you so much to the Housing Department staff, council, and the community for your leadership. Now let's do this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Dilsa Gonzalez. I am the organizing and policy manager with Somos Mayfair, a District 4 resident, but I was also a District 5 resident for 20 years. And I had to move, because there's not low-income housing available in our communities. During that transition, I was also homeless for three months, not because I couldn't afford it, but because I couldn't find anything. Today, you have in your hands the opportunity to bring housing to families, members like myself, and hundreds are sitting right now with us. You have the opportunity to bring a safe housing for our children, to be able to grow, and the opportunity for people like me to be able to say, "San Jose is still my home, and I'm proud of it." So I'm going to urge you today to vote yes on tenant preference, to bring a little pathway for future.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Esmeralda Varelas with Destination Home. A tenant preference policy will help advance housing equity in our community. At a time when low-income households are under serious stress and risk of displacement, we commend the council for advocating for critical community priorities, such as reserving 35% of affordable units for local residents. We also applaud the easing of burdens on renters with the direction that property managers accept alternative documents for applications, all of which could be life-changing for those most affected in our communities. This policy serves to advance fair housing goals by addressing displacement, particularly among BIPOC households. By taking decisive action today, you acknowledge the profound impact housing stability has on a person's overall well-being. Advance fair housing goals and bring us one step closer to making San Jose a city where everyone has access to dignified.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call a few names while she makes her way down. I have, and the following speakers have requested interpretation. Vicento Mayoral, Yessenia Diaz, Yolanda Casas, Rosaro Vivanco, and Aurora Salis. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Norma Sitlali Martínez Chavez, and I am a member of the east side of San Jose community. I have experienced firsthand the injustice of our housing system. I am wary of the persistent inequity in our community. My peer leaders and I are committed to fighting for change until we see our policies reflect the needs of its residents. The tenant preference policy was served as the safety blanket for our most vulnerable San Jose residents. It is crucial that office officials work closely with local nonprofits to identify steady funding sources to support the long-term implementation of tenant preference program. We ask you to work with us, not against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Yessenia Diaz. Soy líder del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Guadalupe. Durante cuatro años he vivido aquí en San Jose.
Good afternoon. My name is Yessenia Diaz. I am the leader of the Grupo de Justicia Migratoria, which is the migration justice group de Amigos de Guadalupe. And we have lived here for the past four years in District 3.
Con mis cuatro hijos. Desafortunadamente, con el alto costo de alquiler y los bajos salarios, tengo que tener dos trabajos para así mismo darle vivienda accesible a mis hijos.
I've lived here with my three children, with my four children, and unfortunately, with the high cost of living for the rents and the low salaries, I have to have two, I have to work two jobs in order to give my children affordable housing.
Ya que soy madre soltera, he solicitado varios apartamentos de bajos recursos, pero nunca he escuchado noticias.
Since I'm a single mother, I have applied for many apartments for low income, but I've never received any news for that, in regards to that.
Pero hoy que varias organizaciones están pidiendo de que nos escuchen, de pasar esta póliza de vivienda accesible, les pido que pasen esta póliza de corazón para así mismo ser accesible para varias familias.
But now that various organizations have been requesting for you to listen to us, we ask that you please pass the policy for the affordable housing, and please pass the policy, and please use your heart when you're thinking about doing this for the affordable housings.
Les pido de favor que pasen esta póliza, sí se puede. Espero que seamos escuchados y nos brinden este apoyo a toda mi comunidad y a mis organizaciones. Mil gracias.
We ask that you please listen to us and please pass the policy for affordable housing, and I ask you please to pass the policy. Sí se puede, yes, you can. We hope that you please listen to us and you give us the support that all the community and all the organizations that I'm with ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Vicenta Mayoral.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Vicenta Mayoral.
Soy miembro de Vecinos Activos y Luna.
I am a member of Vecinos Activos and Luna.
Estoy aquí apoyando a la preferencia de inquilinos.
I am here to support the tenant preference policy.
Para que no sigamos siendo, sigamos ser desplazados.
So we will not continue to be displaced.
Queremos seguir viviendo aquí donde nacieron nuestros hijos, nietos, y abuelos.
We want to continue to live here where our children, our grandchildren, and our grandparents were born.
Que tengamos un lugar seguro y estable donde no tengamos que estar con miedo.
That we have a safe and secure place and staple where we do not have to be afraid.
O en qué momento ya no podamos pagar las viviendas.
Or that any time that we may not be able to pay for our housing.
Queremos que pasen la preferencia de inquilinos, porque es una necesidad que tenemos, ya que las rentas son muy caras.
We want you to pass the tenant preference policy, because since it is a necessity and the rents are too high.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Esperemos que se conmuevan para podernos ayudar a todos. Una comunidad que está en desplazamiento. Gracias.
Thank you. We hope that we touch your hearts, because that way you can help everybody and the community so they no longer can be displaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes. Vengo de parte de Vecinos Activos.
Hello, good afternoon. I come on behalf of Vecinos Activos.
Y vengo igual a apoyar para el desplazamiento de viviendas accesibles para todos. Aunque yo vivo en un...
Yes, and I come here for, in support for the anti-displacement tenant preference policy.
Y miembro del consejo de la ciudad de San Jose. Mi nombre es Karime García. Soy un líder de Amigos de Guadalupe, Centro de Justicia y Empoderamiento.
And members of the council, my name is Karime García, and I'm a leader of Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment.
Los residentes han estado en esta lucha constante y pertinente.
The residents have been in this struggle and this fight, constant and pertinent, this struggle that's pertinent and constant.
Para evitar el desplazamiento de familias.
To avoid the displacement of families.
Que por años han mantenido la integración de su comunidad.
That for years, they have maintained the integrity of their community.
Por ello queremos ser escuchados y solicitamos sea aprobada la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos.
And for them, we want to be heard, and we request that the policy for the preference for tenants be approved.
Muchas gracias. Buena tarde.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is María Martinez. I am a mayor and council members. I know someone. I speak with all of you in different perspectives, but I'm here with Somos Mayfair. I'm working in the Family Resource Center as a CHvez, and I hear a thousand of families that be struggling to find affordable housing. That's why I'm here. I'll be here to asking you, please, don't postpone the tenant preference policy. We need now be a champion for that family that struggle every time to find a low-income family houses. So please, leaving their legacy to make this decision today. We need it now. We need it now for this family. We need this. The family, they need a safety place for their kid.
Thank you. Your time? Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Janelle Garcia, and I am with Somos Mayfair. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities, and the San Jose City Council has the opportunity to address the root causes of our housing crisis by approving the tenant preference policy today. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters, increase of access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and costs. Please don't postpone the tenant preference policy any longer and vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
To Mayor and all of the city council members, my name is Carlos Junior, and I'm a resident of District Four, Somos Mayfair. Echoing the voices of many, I am also voice my support for the tenant preference policy and urge the policy be adopted by the council. Per San Jose State 2023 Silicon Valley Pain Index, the city of San Jose is ranked number one in youth homelessness. Yet this is not surprising when it takes a common working person 3.7 minimum wage jobs and a median rent of $4,000, also per the Silicon Valley Pain Index. Youth and their families are being replaced at high levels. By adopting tenant preference policy, the city can begin remedying the housing crisis that plagues San Jose and truly begin the process of San Jose being a true inclusive city for all working-class families and a certain few. Please pass turn tenant preference policy and please allow for documentation to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and call the next set of people. The last name is Montado. First name starts with a J or an S, but Montado is the last name. Yorina Guzman, Maria Chavez, and Anastasia Abara. And they have indicated interpretation needs, please. And first person to the microphone. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Janice Montejo González. Soy líder del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Justicia.
Good afternoon. My name is Janice Chazible Montejo González. I am a leader of Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Guadalupe.
Soy residente del Distrito Seis de la ciudad de San Jose. Yo vivo allí hace dos años junto a mi hija y mi esposo.
I am a resident of District Six in the city of San Jose. I have been living there for almost two years, and I live there together with my daughter and my husband.
Por causa de las altas rentas, vivimos en una parte de estudio muy pequeña.
Because of the high rents, we live in a small studio apartment.
Ya que nunca he podido acceder a un apartamento por las altas rentas y los bajos salarios.
Since I haven't been able to access an apartment because of the high rents and the low wages.
Yo apoyo la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos ya que nos ayuda a acceder a un apartamento mejor para mi familia y todas las familias que estar en este lugar.
I support the anti-displacement tenant preference policy since for them to be able to help us to be able to access a better apartment for our families and for all the rest of the families that are here in this place.
Y las que necesitan, ya que se está presentando una alta oleada de personas en estado de salo.
And for the ones that need it, since there is, there has been a high wave of people in this state that have presented themselves, and they are displaced.
Y sin vivienda. Esto nos ayuda a mejorar nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias por su atención y si se puede.
And they do not have any housing, and this would help us to better our city. Thank you so much, and thank you for your attention. Si se puede. Yes, you can.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Anastasia Barca, y soy una líder comunitaria.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anastasia Barca, and I'm a community leader.
Y participo en varios comités de aquí del área de San Jose. Uno de ellos es Comité Paso, Centro Comunitario de Sagrado Corazón, Amigos de Guadalupe, Centro de Justicia, Empoderamiento, y el Movimiento de Papel para Todos.
I am a community leader, and I participate in several committees in the area of San Jose. One of them is Passos, at the community center of Sacred Heart. The other one is Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment, and PPT.
Llevo 18 años viviendo en San Jose. Ahorita llevo tres meses viviendo en el Distrito Siete, donde ya fue mi vivienda anteriormente.
I have been living in San Jose for 18 years, and right now I've been living three months in District Seven, which was previously already my residence.
Y nunca he encontrado una vivienda estable porque con el salario de San Jose no te alcanza y con el costo de las viviendas está muy alto.
And I have not been able to find a stable housing because with the low salaries in San Jose, they're not enough, and the cost of living is too high.
He ha aplicado los apartamentos de bajos ingresos. Como sabemos, los cobros por las tarifas de las aplicaciones, y después nos dicen que no calificamos. Eso sí es una injusticia que hace con nuestra comunidad, y muchas veces somos discriminados por el color de piel y por no hablar el idioma.
And I have applied several times to low-income housing, in the Apartments for Low-Income Housing, and as you know, they charge a lot for the application fees, and after that, they tell us that we don't qualify, and that's an injustice. And many times, we are discriminated because of the color of our skin or because we do not speak the language.
Yo apoyo a que prueben la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos. Estoy segura que si pasa esta póliza a muchas personas de nuestra comunidad, se beneficiarán. Gracias.
I am, I support that the tenant preference policy passes today, and I'm sure that if you pass this policy, a lot of people in our community will benefit from it. Thank you.
Vote en sí a la póliza.
No, that's your time. You're done. Mute it.
Vote yes to the policy. Thank you, and have a beautiful afternoon.
Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consejo. Mi nombre es Vicenta Mayoral.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Vicenta Mayoral.
Soy miembro de Vecinos Activos y Luna.
I am a member of Vecinos Activos and Luna.
Estoy aquí apoyando la preferencia de inquilinos.
I am here to support the tenant preference policy. Since I am a person that's being affected by it.
Fui desplazada de aquí de la ciudad de San Jose.
I was displaced from this city, San Jose.
Y eso me afecta mucho para mi trabajo económicamente.
And this affects me very much so in regards to my work and financially.
Estoy en otra parte, en otra ciudad, y desde allá traigo los niños hasta aquí a la escuela.
I'm in another place, another city, and from there I bring my children to school.
Y quisiera que hoy nos dijeran sí al desplazamiento, por favor, al no desplazamiento, por favor.
And I would like that for today you say yes to no displacement, please.
Gracias. Gracias por apoyar y si se puede.
Thank you. Thank you for your support and yes, you can. Si se puede.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Oscar. I can't read the last name. Oscar, Rachel Subega, Carlos Junior, Maria Martinez, and Janelle Garcia. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Aurora Solis. I am 70 years old. I have my grandchildren and a son. As a child, I had to be moving around, and I moved to San Jose in hopes that I wasn't going to be moving around like I did as a child. My parents couldn't afford one house, so we had to go to another one and another one. And every time we moved, we had to make new friends, we had to meet new teachers, and it is uncomfortable living in a way like that. So San Jose needs a good place for all of our children, and that's the reason I am here. I moved to San Jose in 1968, and I am a renter. So it is.
Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Can you hear me? Yeah. Hello, council. I wanted to read this chart to you. It says obstacles of attaining permanent housing. Top responses in 2022. Can't afford rent, 71%. That's for 2022. No job, not enough income, 53%. No money for moving costs, 24%. No housing available, 23%. And then the last one is no ID paperwork, 16%. It just goes to show that every year we talk about the same things. We talk about housing displacement. We talk about accessibility. We talk about people living in their cars, kids moving all the time. So when are we going to do something about it? People took time off their job to be here today because we took away Zoom meeting comments. The decision is not ours. The decision is yours, and we're here all the time to make these decisions. So I hope you approve the tenant preference policy and approve the measures that we need to do right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. You can speak from there. You don't have to go up.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. My name is Rachel Subega. I'm an SEIU Fight 21 Retiree, and I worked in the county for 30 years, and now I'm an active retiree. I'm here to support this legislation. Oh my God, it's so long in coming. I'm very proud of our city council, and hopefully each and every one of you will vote for this. This is something that's needed. Look, look at everybody here. Wonderful. I'm so, so happy to be here, and I hope we get a yes vote from each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, honorable alcalde.
Hello. Good afternoon, honorable mayor.
Y miembro del Consejo de la ciudad de San Jose. Mi nombre es Karime García. Soy un líder de Amigos de Guadalupe, Centro de Justicia y Empoderamiento.
And members of the council, my name is Karime García, and I'm a leader of Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment.
Los residentes han estado en esta lucha constante y pertinente.
The residents have been in this struggle and this fight, constant and pertinent, this struggle that's pertinent and constant.
Para evitar el desplazamiento de familias.
To avoid the displacement of families.
Que por años han mantenido la integración de su comunidad.
That for years, they have maintained the integrity of their community.
Por ello queremos ser escuchados y solicitamos sea aprobada la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos.
And for them, we want to be heard, and we request that the policy for the preference for tenants be approved.
Muchas gracias. Buena tarde.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is María Martinez. I am a mayor and council members. I know someone. I speak with all of you in different perspectives, but I'm here with Somos Mayfair. I'm working in the Family Resource Center as a CHvez, and I hear a thousand of families that be struggling to find affordable housing. That's why I'm here. I'll be here to asking you, please, don't postpone the tenant preference policy. We need now be a champion for that family that struggle every time to find a low-income family houses. So please, leaving their legacy to making this decision today. We need it now. We need it now for this family. We need this. The family, they need a safety place for their kid.
Thank you. Your time? Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Janelle Garcia, and I am with Somos Mayfair. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities, and the San Jose City Council has the opportunity to address the root causes of our housing crisis by approving the tenant preference policy today. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters, increase of access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and costs. Please don't postpone the tenant preference policy any longer and vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
To Mayor and all of the city council members, my name is Carlos Junior, and I'm a resident of District Four, Somos Mayfair. Echoing the voices of many, I am also voice my support for the tenant preference policy and urge the policy be adopted by the council. Per San Jose State 2023 Silicon Valley Pain Index, the city of San Jose is ranked number one in youth homelessness. Yet this is not surprising when it takes a common working person 3.7 minimum wage jobs and a median rent of $4,000, also per the Silicon Valley Pain Index. Youth and their families are being replaced at high levels. By adopting tenant preference policy, the city can begin remedying the housing crisis that plagues San Jose and truly begin the process of San Jose being a true inclusive city for all working-class families and a certain few. Please pass turn tenant preference policy and please allow for documentation to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and call the next set of people. The last name is Montado. First name starts with a J or an S, but Montado is the last name. Yorina Guzman, Maria Chavez, and Anastasia Abara. And they have indicated interpretation needs, please. And first person to the microphone. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Janice Montejo González. Soy líder del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Justicia.
Good afternoon. My name is Janice Chazible Montejo González. I am a leader of Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Guadalupe.
Soy residente del Distrito Seis de la ciudad de San Jose. Yo vivo allí hace dos años junto a mi hija y mi esposo.
I am a resident of District Six in the city of San Jose. I have been living there for almost two years, and I live there together with my daughter and my husband.
Por causa de las altas rentas, vivimos en una parte de estudio muy pequeña.
Because of the high rents, we live in a small studio apartment.
Ya que nunca he podido acceder a un apartamento por las altas rentas y los bajos salarios.
Since I haven't been able to access an apartment because of the high rents and the low wages.
Yo apoyo la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos ya que nos ayuda a acceder a un apartamento mejor para mi familia y todas las familias que estar en este lugar.
I support the anti-displacement tenant preference policy since for them to be able to help us to be able to access a better apartment for our families and for all the rest of the families that are here in this place.
Y las que necesitan, ya que se está presentando una alta oleada de personas en estado de salo.
And for the ones that need it, since there is, there has been a high wave of people in this state that have presented themselves, and they are displaced.
Y sin vivienda. Esto nos ayuda a mejorar nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias por su atención y si se puede.
And they do not have any housing, and this would help us to better our city. Thank you so much, and thank you for your attention. Si se puede. Yes, you can.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Anastasia Barca, y soy una líder comunitaria.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anastasia Barca, and I'm a community leader.
Y participo en varios comités de aquí del área de San Jose. Uno de ellos es Comité Paso, Centro Comunitario de Sagrado Corazón, Amigos de Guadalupe, Centro de Justicia, Empoderamiento, y el Movimiento de Papel para Todos.
I am a community leader, and I participate in several committees in the area of San Jose. One of them is Passos, at the community center of Sacred Heart. The other one is Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment, and PPT.
Income renters, increase of access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and costs. Please don't postpone the tenant preference policy any longer and vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
To Mayor Han and all those city council members, my name is Carlos Junior and I'm a resident of District Four, Somos Mayfair. Echoing the voices of many, I am also voice my support for the tenant preference policy and urge the policy be adopted by the council. Per San Jose State 2023 Silicon Valley Paying Index, the city of San Jose is ranked number one in youth homelessness. Yet this is not surprising when it takes a common working person 3.7 minimum wage jobs and a median rent of $4,000, also per the Silicon Valley Paying Index. Youth and their families are being replaced at high levels. By adopting tenant preference policy, the city can begin remedying the housing crisis that plagues San Jose and truly begin the process of San Jose being a true inclusive city for all working-class families and a certain few. Please pass tenant preference policy and please allow for documentation to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the next set of people. The last name is Montado, first name starts with a J or an S. But Montado is the last name. Yurina Guzman, Maria Chavez, and Anastasia Abara. And they have indicated interpretation needs, please. And first person to the microphone. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Janice Blading Montejo Gonzalez. Soy líder del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Justicia.
Good afternoon. My name is Janice Jacible Montejo Gonzalez. I am a leader of Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Guadalupe.
Soy residente del Distrito Seis de la ciudad de San Jose. Yo vivo allí hace dos años junto a mi hija y mi esposo.
I am a resident of District Six in the city of San Jose. I have been living there for almost two years and I live there together with my daughter and my husband.
Por causa de las altas rentas vivimos en una parte de estudio muy pequeña.
Because of the high rents, we live in a small studio apartment.
Ya que nunca he podido acceder a un apartamento por las altas rentas y los bajos salarios.
Since I haven't been able to access an apartment because of the high rents and the low wages.
Yo apoyo la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos ya que nos ayuda a acceder a un apartamento mejor para mi familia y todas las familias que estar en este lugar.
I support the anti-displacement tenant preference policy since for them to be able to help us to be able to access a better apartment for our families and for all the rest of the families that are here in this place.
Y las que necesitan, ya que se está presentando una alta oleada de personas en estado de salo.
And for the ones that need it, since there has been a high wave of people in this state that have presented themselves and they are displaced.
Y sin vivienda. Esto nos ayuda a mejorar nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias por su atención y si se puede.
And they do not have any housing. And this would help us to better our city. Thank you so much and thank you for your attention. Si se puede. Yes, you can.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Anastasia Barca y soy una líder comunitaria.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anastasia Barca and I'm a community leader.
Y participo en varios comités de aquí del área de San Jose. Uno de ellos es Comité Paso, Centro Comunitario de Sagrado Corazón, Amigos de Guadalupe, Centro de Justicia, Empoderamiento, y el Movimiento de Papel para Todos.
I am a community leader and I participate in several committees in the area of San Jose. One of them is Passos at the Community Center of Sacred Heart. The other one is Amigos de Guadalupe, Center for Justice and Empowerment, and PPT. And PPT, etc.
Papel para Todos. Llevo 18 años viviendo en San Jose. Ahorita llevo tres meses viviendo en el Distrito Siete, donde ya fue mi vivienda anteriormente.
I have been living in San Jose for eighteen years. And right now I've been living three months in District Seven, which was previously already my residence.
Y nunca he encontrado una vivienda estable porque con el salario de San Jose no te alcanza y con el costo de las viviendas está muy alto.
And I have not been able to find a stable housing because with the low salaries in San Jose, they're not enough and the cost of living is too high.
He ha aplicado los apartamentos de bajos ingresos. Como sabemos, los cobros por las tarifas de las aplicaciones y después nos dicen que no calificamos. Eso sí es una injusticia que hace con nuestra comunidad y muchas veces somos discriminados por el color de piel y por no hablar el idioma.
And I have applied several times to low-income housing in the Apartments for Low-Income Housing. And as you know, they charge a lot for the application fees. And after that, they tell us that we don't qualify. And that's an injustice. And many times, we are discriminated because of the color of our skin or because we do not speak the language.
Yo apoyo a que prueben la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos. Estoy segura que si pasa esta póliza a muchas personas de nuestra comunidad se beneficiarán. Gracias.
I support that the tenant preference policy passes today. And I'm sure that if you pass this policy, a lot of people in our community will benefit from it. Thank you.
Vote en sí a la póliza.
No, that's your time. You're done. Mute it.
Vote yes to the policy. Thank you and have a beautiful afternoon.
Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, members of the Council. Mi nombre es Yurina Guzman, organizadora comunitaria con Luna.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Yurina Guzman. I'm a community organizer with Luna.
Nuestras comunidades, especialmente las de color, han enfrentado agresivamente el desplazamiento sin tener la oportunidad de accesar a las viviendas de bajos ingresos, siendo forzados a salir de sus hogares, dejando sus escuelas, trabajos, y algunas veces hasta sus familias por la crisis de vivienda.
Our communities, especially those of color, still aggressively face displacement without having the opportunity to access low-income housing, being forced to leave their homes, leaving their schools, jobs, and sometimes even their families due to the housing crisis.
Hoy, hoy es el día en que las comunidades merecen escuchar sí a la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos, donde les permitirá acceder a las viviendas de bajos ingresos así los residentes pueden permanecer en sus comunidades y mejorar sus condiciones de vida.
Today is the day when communities deserve to hear a yes to the tenant preference policy, where it will allow them to access low-income housing so residents can remain in the communities and improve their living conditions.
Cada familia merece un hogar digno y no vivir con miedo de ser expulsados en cualquier momento. Sí a la póliza de preferencia de inquilinos que haga de San Jose un ejemplo de protección a sus comunidades. Fuertes. Gracias.
Every family deserves a decent home and not to live in fear of being displaced at any moment. Yes, to the tenant preference policy that will make San Jose an example of protection for its communities. Thank you.
Again, yes, it's today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call in Jessica from Somos Mayfair. Elizabeth from Somos Mayfair, Jessica Trujillo, Elizabeth Camya, and Olivia Ortiz. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Chávez. Soy un líder del Grupo de Justicia Migratoria de Amigos de Guadalupe y residente del Distrito Cinco.
Good afternoon. My name is María Chávez and I'm a leader of the migrant justice group of Amigos de Guadalupe and I'm a resident in District Five.
En la ciudad de San Jose soy residente del barrio Mayfair desde hace muchos, más de trece años junto con mi familia, mi esposo, y mis cuatro hijos que nacieron y crecieron en el hermoso barrio de Mayfair.
I am a resident in the city of San Jose, of the barrio Mayfair, neighborhood Mayfair, since more than thirteen years ago, along with my family, my husband, and my four children, who were born and raised in the beautiful neighborhood of Mayfair.
Y es aquí donde hemos echado nuestras raíces y donde nos gustaría seguir formando nuestra familia.
And it is here where we have rooted ourselves and where we would like to continue raising our family.
Desafortunadamente, los altos costos de alquiler y los bajos salarios nos han obligado a mí y a mi esposo a pasar inolvidables noches pensando qué vamos a hacer si vamos a seguir viviendo aquí.
Unfortunately, the high-costing rents and the low salaries have forced my husband and myself to have countless nights thinking, how are we going to continue living here?
Vivimos en un apartamento de una sola habitación donde la habitación era, es para los niños menores.
That's your time.
Y la sala de estar es para nosotros, para mí, para mi esposo.
We live in a one-bedroom apartment where the bedroom is for our smaller children and the living room is for my husband, myself, and our youngest child.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Olivia Ortiz. I'm part of Vecinos Activos with Somos Mayfair. First of all, I want to thank the House Department for the work they've done in this long process. Also, I want to thank the council members that have made time to meet with us and listen to the community, especially Councilmember Ortiz. Thank you so much for your support. As was mentioned on the presentation, there were voices involved in this process, in this long process. But unfortunately, those voices are no longer, some of those voices are no longer in our community. They have been displaced and those were great voices for our community. My question is, why did this took so long? Why this took so many years? I really hope that today you guys support this policy and moving forward, we're with the community to find solutions for this housing crisis. We really need to focus on this housing crisis because we're just not talking about numbers. We're talking about families, human beings. And I think it's time to, all of us, you know, work together.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jessica Moktazuma and I'm with Somos Mayfair. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent future displacement of our communities. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters, increase access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and cost. I have lived here in San Jose for over thirty years and a year ago I was displaced. So, you know, lucky me, I'm one of the statistics. San Jose was home. San Jose was where I was raised. San Jose was a part of my identity. I had to move because there's no affordable housing here in San Jose. So please approve the tenant policy today. We need to stop prolonging the housing crisis. Our community, our families, our networks, they should remain intact. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Jessica Trejo. It's Somos Mayfair and I'm also a District Three resident. And we all know that there is a current housing crisis impacting many of us in negative ways, right? One of them being having to move out of the city or seeing our family members in communities having to leave because of the high cost of living here. And, you know, San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities. Please, please, please approve the tenant preference policy today. This policy will increase access to affordable housing and improve housing stability and cost, giving us the break that we all need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Casada and I am here with Somos Mayfair. I'm also a San Jose District Five resident. I live in an affordable housing complex and the benefits and the impact on my family have been enormous. It has created stable housing and community for us. It has allowed me to stay and live in San Jose. Paying affordable rent means I can stay home, at least one of us can, and watch my kids grow and volunteer at their school. I can go on with all the benefits that has provided me living in affordable housing, but sadly, not everyone has the same opportunity. When rents are high and parents have to work two jobs to be able to make ends meet. So I urge our council members today to not postpone the tenant preference policy. We need affordable housing and San Jose families can't wait any longer. You can be part of change and impact families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Camya. I'm here on behalf of the NAACP. The racial disparities of who is at risk of displacement and subsequently unhoused is large. In addition to the examples provided by the housing departments in their presentation, I want to share that while Black people make up a small population in Santa Clara County, 2.8% to be exact, when looking at the unhoused population, 18% are African-Americans. Everyone deserves housing. This includes communities of color. No one should have to face moving away from their families, their homes, their school at the risk of becoming unhoused. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters and increase access to affordable housing. I stand with all the organizations here today in support of the tenant preference policy and I urge the council to approve this policy to ensure protections and housing for our communities.
I'd also, next speaker, Andrea Portillo, Catherine Hedges, Leslie Diaz, Waskar Castro, and Mauricio Gonzalez.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine from Catherine Hedges, District Three, member of SUR, allied with Somos Mayfair. I strongly urge the council to vote unanimously to approve the anti-displacement policy. This has been years in the making, long overdue. We've heard from plenty of people affected by it directly. But also, we need to ensure that there is funding to build new affordable housing or that anti-displacement preference will be hollow and meaningless. We need to stop rating Measure E, affordable housing funding for housing production. We need to find alternative grant funding for the interim housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Andrea Portillo with Somos Mayfair. I just want to say that I support the memo put forward by council members Ortiz, Candela Torres, and Cohen to prioritize a robust community outreach plan with resources to roll out the policy effectively. I'm really excited to be here with community members, housing advocates, housing department staff, and the thousands of tenants and renters who we hope this policy will support. It's been a really long time coming and this is really a win for the community and all of the time and effort that they've put hosting community forums and workshops, meeting with council members to develop this policy. So really excited that the day is finally here. Tenant preferences is but a tool in our toolbox to fight against displacement. We must continue to invest funding and resources to continue building affordable housing, preserving existing housing, and protecting tenants. There's a lot of work left to be done, so let's keep the momentum going. Our communities can't afford to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Waskar Castro, Working Partnerships USA. I'd like to start off by stating our strong support for tenant preferences and to stand alongside our grassroots community here who's worked tirelessly, as previously mentioned, through a variety of different ways to raise the support and really urge the need for policies such as these. Want to also just mention this, it's been a long time coming, as many have said. In a past life, I've worked in a district office alongside now Councilmember Torres in really identifying what was once an affordable development and then looking at how we can look at setting aside units to be prioritized for folks living in either areas at risk of displacement or within these developments. And now to be at this point is a really big accomplishment. Lastly, I want to recognize that in order for this policy to be truly effective, we really need to prioritize the continued investment in new sources of affordable housing. I really look forward to seeing that.
Okay, calling the next batch of speakers. Speaker Caesar, Mariana, Jaime, Alisa, and Deborah.
Hello, my name is Leslie and I am a leader of Grupo de Justicia en Amigos de Guadalupe. We have lived in District Three with my single mother and three siblings for the last four years. Unfortunately, with the high cost of rent and low wages, it has forced my mom to get a morning job and night job to continue living in San Jose. I have lost hope of one day having an affordable apartment for me and my family, but then I realized that Amigos de Guadalupe and Somos Mayfair are working on the tenant preference policy. I urge you to pass this policy as a tool to address our housing crisis so that families can have an opportunity to stay in neighborhoods they love. Thank you.
Yes, some more support. That's it. Go ahead. Read you, stand.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and members of San Jose City Council. My name is Marisa González Torres and I am a leader of Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities. My family and I were significantly affected by the displacement of families to the extent that we had to move to Marpitas and my mom had to drive thirty minutes in the morning and in the afternoon so that I could continue attending in the school in San Jose and in the future be sitting on one of those chairs.
Hello, my name is Deborah Townley. I was displaced from one zip code to another after a car accident and disability and becoming unhoused. After investing a lot of time and energy into my neighborhood and my local community and the schools and as an entrepreneur, I lost everything and had to find services in a different zip code. My kids lost their friends, connections with their friends and, you know, everyday activities and things that were just... It was like gentrification basically drove through my family and separated us not just from my ex-husband but also from our neighbors and friends and coworkers. So please...
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Cesar Navarro. I'm here with Latinas United for New America. I was born and raised here in San Jose. I see the city pushing for multifamily and mixed-dies housing, which I think is a great strategy. However, the construction of new housing alone is not going to solve this issue. Ninety-six percent of residential land is zoned for single-family homes, so that leaves the other percent, the other four percent, where we will develop this in the very communities that are being impacted by displacement the most. So today, we can see multiple development proposals in the Twenty-Six and Worcester neighborhood, a neighborhood comprised primarily of low-income immigrant, Latino, and working-class residents, a neighborhood which will drastically change in the next decade with a bar extension and a new urban village coming, as well as the current residents if council doesn't act on this policy. That's why I urge you to pass this policy with an increase, increasing the twenty percent of units reserved to thirty-five percent for the program to accept alternative...
Thank you. Next speaker. Also calling the next batch, Sandy, Victor, John, Robert, and Lili.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mariana. I'm here with Luna. San Jose residents are urging city council to approve the tenant preference policies today to prefer displacement in our communities. This policy will support low-income renters, increase affordable housing accessibility. We support Cohen's, Ortiz', Candela's, Torres', and Cohen's memo for a stronger community outreach plan. Please don't delay this decision any longer. Thank you.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Jaime Elvarado with the Alamo Urban Village Advocates. First of all, congratulations to everyone involved in this. I mean, literally hundreds of people from the community were involved in the development of this policy. We had staff who slugged through it for years. All of you who attended community meetings, this is what the democratic process looks like. This is how it's supposed to be done. I want to thank all of you, everybody who was involved, for making it happen in the way it did. This policy addresses a serious failure in current policy. So yes, 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 please vote for this. This is important and it's a win for everybody involved. Today is an important first step. The passing of this policy is an important first step. And I want to turn attention, I mean, let's get through that and then let's turn attention to the second step and that's approving the budget that supports this policy. We cannot be rating Measure E dollars because it'll come at the detriment...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Sandy Perry. I'm from South Bay Community Land Trust and I'm here today to support the local tenant preference policy but also point out, as some other speakers have, that without new affordable housing, there will be no local tenant preference policy. Thirty-five percent of zero is zero. Families will continue to be displaced and low-income and people of color communities will continue to be torn apart and destroyed by gentrification even if we adopt this policy today if we don't allocate funds for affordable housing. We call on the mayor and the council to listen to the voice of San Jose residents who chose affordable housing as one of their highest priorities. And we are asking you to make, when the budget comes, make the hard decisions and increase funds for affordable housing. Do not decrease them. Without affordable housing...
Thank you. Your time. Next speaker.
Hello. Well, I support the anti-displacement tenant preference program. Very glad to see something like this starting to be implemented. But let's not forget, ten thousand or so people already got displaced, who we've called the homeless. So the increase of the budget for affordable and low-income housing has to... So the increase of the budget for affordable and low-income housing has to be greatly increased, too. People who are fearful of losing their homes are just the tip of the iceberg of the homeless crisis, and I think thinking outside the box also required, like massively expanding the use of closed buildings of all sorts. We see all over town awaiting developers' future profits. I think not allowing ten thousand, thousands of buildings to sit vacant would be another good thing to look into. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Victor Vazquez from Somos Mayfair and Cisapue de Collective. We've been fighting displacement for decades as residents and citizens, and as well as as brown people, indigenous people to this land. It is outrageous that we're facing this housing crisis, homeless almost near homeless in our homeland. Council studies report that housing crisis impact black and brown people, or youth specifically. Where's the vote, where's the vote to vote yes on tenant preference today unanimously? A yes vote is also a vote for education, to keep our kids in schools. It's a yes vote on jobs and shorter commutes. It's a yes vote on better mental health for our families, and it's also a vote for more opportunities in our neighborhood. We support the memo authored by councilmember Torres, Ortiz, Candela's, and Cohen as well. We look forward to you to increase affordable housing funding for our...
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I'm going to move on. The other people didn't come forward, so I have Tamara Chavez, Sherat Lynn, Amanda with SOS, and Michael with SOS, and Blair.
Yes, my name is Sherat Lynn. I'm a member of Human Agenda and the San Jose Peace and Justice Center, and both of these organizations are comprised of largely of people who actually own their own homes, but we support this tenant preference policy. You remember the days when, just a couple of years ago, when San Jose was the tenth-largest city in the country? It's fallen to number twelve, I hear, and that's because, the number-one reason is because people have been forced out of housing. So it's really important that we, whether we are renters or we own our own houses, that we support this policy, and I thank the council for bringing it this far, and, you know, this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Amanda from Survivors of the Street. I do not think this housing crisis is an impossible task. I have seen a lot of injustices. I've had to live in my van for ten years and shelters, and I'm a, have a gold star in job skills and a degree, and I'm a grandmother. I don't think displacing people is a good idea, and I support this tenant preference and anti-displacement. I think we should solve more of the root problems. I've heard that social security is being withdrawn from people that have been paying into it. Certain groups don't get their social security even though they've paid in. That seems discriminatory. I give hope, I want to give hope to the children that live here, and I'd love to have houses and yards like where I was raised.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Delma Hernandez, Matthew Reed, and Socorro Montano. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Robert Aguirre, and I'd like to say that we're quite aware of how many unhoused people we have living in the city, and without an anti-displacement policy with tenant preferences and neighborhood tenant preferences for affordable housing draft program, we'll end up with more, and we don't need more, we need fewer, and we need more protections for the people that are living in their, in their housing. I'm also curious why this timing light isn't on. I have to look up. Anyway, I support this, this policy, and I suggest that everybody vote for it. If you've never spent a night outdoors, living along a creek or under a bridge, or in a street or under, in a tent, you have no idea what that's like. So I suggest you think about that when you place...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Matthew Reed, Silicon Valley at Home. I want to thank housing department staff, community members, community leaders for truly tenacious commitment to this policy, and this and prior councils for your support. This is innovative and targeted policy. We've gotten requests for details from around the state and within the county already. We are committed to the next steps of making it work. Many of us who live in San Jose cannot actually afford to live here. You've heard this today, our lowest-income families overwhelmingly pay more than half of their income for rent. San Jose does not have enough housing that they can afford. The impact of this lack of housing is tremendous instability, impossible work schedules, poor school performance. Providing the housing addresses community...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Letizia Alvarez, Yurida Torres Mendoza, and Sean. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Socorro, and I'm with Latinos United for New America. I live in District Five. San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacement of our communities, and today you have the opportunity to address our housing crisis by approving the tenant preference policy. This policy will allow us to prevent the displacement of low-income renters, increase access to affordable housing, and improve housing stability and costs. I was born and raised in San Jose. Three generations of my family have been raised here. I can imagine a future here because my family owns a home, but before each house was at least a million dollars, and yet many of my loved ones, friends, classmates, beautiful community members can't dream long-term here because of housing costs. What an incredible policy we have the opportunity to pass today with specific inclusion for undocumented community that San Jose needs to continue flourishing. I support councilmember Ortiz, Candela's, Torres, and Cohen's memo to prioritize a robust community outreach plan with resources to roll out the policy.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Delma Hernandez, and I'm an organizer with South Bay Community Land Trust, and I'm a member of Luna. I'm also a resident of D5, and I'm here to support my San Jose community who has been working so hard to get the tenant preference policy passed. As you heard from the community, the lack of affordable housing is violently impacting our communities. It impacts our community's health. It traps others in abusive domestic violence relationships, and it also roots our community out of their home and causes homelessness. By embracing the proposed tenant preference policy, San Jose's leadership demonstrates a commitment to the long-term well-being of our communities. It is a policy that really targets affordable housing investments to address community stability, displacement, and homelessness. However, this solution is only going to work if we continue to invest in affordable housing. It needs continuous investment and steady funding for a seamless...
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Pastor Baines.
Hello, city council members. My name is Letizia Alvarez, and I'm here from Sacramento Community Service, and I just want to say that the people, our people, should have the preference to continue living in what they call "community." With your yes vote, you can make this possible. You have the power to maintain the community united. Local tenant preference is the hope for the community to continue being part of our beautiful San Jose. Please vote yes on local tenant preference.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to announce that I have called all of the cards that we've received so far.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, and staff. I'm Pastor Paul Baines. I'm also a landlord that has tenants, and I totally support something you already know that is a good thing. This issue is not new to you, and so I'm just here to encourage you, to let you know you have a community that's behind you that will help to support this great need. As a person who serves over six thousand people in the Bay Area and five counties and twenty-two cities, we need more preferences just like this throughout the whole Bay Area. So we'll be in prayer with you, and we'll do whatever we can to assist you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I just want to give a shout-out to the community who did a damn good job of organizing and working on this for a really long time. So I really want to make everybody clap for this, so we'll just all imaginary clap for this. Yeah, go for it! And then I want to second what Sandy said, that if we don't build more affordable housing, you know, this is just, you know, that's what we need. It's like, we need this and we need this, just like we need tiny homes and we need PSH. I like how the mayor doesn't look at me. That's okay. I'm used to it. I also just wanted to say that I, too, was priced out of here. Most of you know I lived a block from here. I lived a block from here for twelve years, and now I live one block out of Pam's district because I got priced out of San Jose, too. I kind of think that was personal, but anyway. So I, too, got gentrified, you know, and maybe this would have helped me and kept me in San Jose.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everybody. My name is Yudizi, and I am not with any organization, but just here as a constituent. And I think, basically what I wanted to say is, San Jose residents have been advocating to prevent further displacements in our community, and I, being the generation that I am, have seen so many of my friends and family have to leave San Jose in order to start their families, just continue living on their own, or find better opportunities and housing, and I think that is such a loss for our community here in San Jose to lose so much of these people because of housing costs. So I really urge you to not postpone the tenant preference policy any longer. The full city council must approve the ordinance today. We need to stop prolonging the housing crisis. The decision is yours, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Serrano. I'm an associate project manager at Mid Penn Housing, San Jose resident and member of the South Bay CLT. Mid Penn Housing is a regional nonprofit developer, owner, and manager of high-quality affordable housing and onsite resident services. In our San Jose portfolio, we include fourteen properties comprising of over twelve hundred homes with one two-hundred-three-unit project in our pipeline. There's a significant need for affordable housing in San Jose. Our properties in the city are currently facing over seven thousand people on our waitlists for applications for these homes. We stand alongside our partners and numerous community-based organizations and coalitions in support of this tenant preference policy being considered today. We believe this policy will help San Jose residents stay in their communities and benefit those most vulnerable in the city. The policy is a result of years of collaboration between public and private stakeholders and is in line with a broader vision for a robust investment in the three P's: protection, preservation, and production. Thank you for your time and for...
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I have called all the cards for, received for item eight point two, and nobody else is coming up, so I will go back to you.
Great. Thank you, Tony, and thank you all for participating, not just today, though I do really appreciate everyone's public comment, but also, as was noted, this was really policy that grew out of community engagement going back many years. And so, once again, thank you to everybody who's been working closely with us to get to this point. Obviously, between a global pandemic and needing to work with our state legislature to make sure that we could comply with the law, this has been a long and winding road, but I'm really excited that we're finally at this point, and I'm confident we'll be passing a policy that's going to help keep San Jose families and communities together here. We have a number of speakers, looks like just about everybody on the council wants to chime in. We also have a memo, so let me turn it to councilmember Ortiz to say a few words.
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank everyone who came here today to have your voice heard, and of course, our mighty Housing Department for your tireless work on this policy. As a lifelong resident of San Jose and one of the few renters on this council, I personally experienced the city's housing crisis and the toll it takes on many of our working-class families. In recent years, the housing costs have skyrocketed here in the city of San Jose, forcing many people, many people with loved ones in history here, to have to move out of their home. And it's a sad reality that many of our friends, family members, and colleagues have had to relocate from the area due to this high cost of living. Although sad, it shouldn't come to us as a shock, as renters in San Jose must earn forty-five dollars an hour to afford the average monthly rent for a one-bedroom apartment, and a minimum wage worker earning seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents an hour would have to work two and a half full-time jobs to afford living in a one-bedroom apartment here. It's important to note that not all who are displaced are pushed out of the city. Many become homeless. According to a Washington Post publication, increased homelessness is directly tied to increased rent, with every one hundred dollar increase in median rent associated with a nine percent increase in the estimated homeless rate in a city. As we face limited stock of affordable housing units, it's frustrating to see that even those that do exist have not prioritized local families. That is why the tenant preference policy is a critical step in the right direction for our community. Our working families, especially those from communities of color, immigrant communities and working-class families, should not be at risk of being priced out of the neighborhoods that they have called home. As San Jose develops more affordable housing, this tenant preference policy will ensure that new units are prioritized for local residents who are most vulnerable to that displacement. By keeping our residents close to their friends, families, and communities, we can help them continue to add to the vibrancy, diversity, and the inclusive city that we all have been able to call home. That is why my colleagues, councilmember Torres, councilmember Cohen, and councilmember Candela's, and I co-authored our memo, which requests staff to develop and implement a robust outreach strategy that proactively works with local orgs who are active in displaced census tracts to distribute information about the purpose of this policy, and issue a manager's budget addendum, which helps us understand the overall cost of this work. We've done this because we are committed to ensure that this policy both passes but is actually implemented in an effective way. And finally, I just want to share my deepest gratitude to, of course, the Cisapue de Collective, Somos Mayfair, other partners like Amigos de Guadalupe, Silicon Valley at Home, Luna, South Bay Community Land Trust. If I didn't mention you, it's nothing personal. Everybody here, thank you for your work, but it's because of your tireless advocacy and mobilization of our community that we've reached this point. And I want to thank you all for leading this charge and ensuring that our families have a place they can all call home. But I just also want to mention that this policy is great, and it's going to do wonders for our community, but a tenant preference policy means nothing if we defund... for our community, but a tenant preference policy means nothing if we defund our affordable housing development here in the city of San Jose. We can't have just one and defund the other, right? And just be mindful, when people rush to support this publicly, but then also defund our affordable housing dollars, that's nothing short of disingenuous. So, thank you all. Again, kudos to our Housing Department. And with that, I move our memo from Councilmember Torres, Cohen, and Candelas. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I was so excited about wanting to talk about this item, that when we were in the previous section, I raised my hand on that one, because I thought this is the one we were going to talk about it. Because this is a so well-thought-out policy, and the local first is so obvious, because we need to be able to have people who build San Jose be living in San Jose, living in the neighborhood they raise themselves in. So, when this thing was presented at the Community and Economic Development, I was very, very pleased to see how completely thought-out this policy was. It doesn't only say what it needs to achieve, it talks about how exactly we're going to be able to do it, because it's using some of the new principles here. We're talking about neighborhoods, so you need to know who really qualifies in that neighborhood. You made the tools available. In order for it to be successful, you're going to have to make the property managers be able to do something which they have never done before, having to look for the preferences from the neighborhood, then looking at the documents. So, you created the tools which will allow people to be able to implement this policy in a meaningful way, which is what you've thought about it. So, based on those things, I believe this is a great policy, which we're going to support, and we want to implement it, and we want to see it successful. I also want to point out that when you're communicating about this, the greatness of this policy, as has been pointed out, that we are not going to have tons of apartments available for people to be able to move in. So, we need to set the expectations right, that in the next year or two, not everybody who even walked down here today will be able to get one of these places in their local preference, because there aren't that many units coming. And I think this one portion, I'm going to make a comment, this is not necessarily relevant to the local preference or to the apartments. I think these people are low-income. We would need to invest our energies, our resources, so that they don't stay low-income forever. They are low-income today. We need to be able to get them the tools which will increase their income, so that they're not dependent on the help which they get through as a low-income. For me, that has been my life's work, to make people be able to get the kind of tools, the education, if not for themselves, for their next generation, and provide that. That's how the upward mobility happens. We need to help the ones who are not able to move up today with this low-income housing. But we need to invest so that their children, their next generation, is going to be upward mobile, and will be actually helping others who need help, not the ones receiving help. So, with that comment, I'm going to say that I will support this policy, and I'm excited to support this policy. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Candelas?
I believe Councilmember Torres had his hand up before I did.
Yeah, I saw it, that's right. Councilwoman Torres lost his spot. Do you want to, that works, you want to go?
Only if I don't lose my place.
Now, you're at the end of the list. Sorry.
Such a gentleman, Councilmember Candelas. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I want to say thank you to our community for being out here today. Your hard work means a lot, and it's starting to show up here on the dais. And so, I'm happy to be here to support this policy, and thank you to our staff for the incredible work the past few years. Again, incredible, an incredible policy to help out our local community. And most importantly, obviously, we need to say thank you to the elected official who made this happen, and so, she's no longer with us. She is now retired, but former Councilmember Magdalena Carrasco, this was a priority for her in her first term in office. And so, major kudos to Councilmember Carrasco, who I worked for when she first proposed this policy. So, myself and Waskar worked on this policy when we were working for her. So, it's all, it's great to see it come to fruition. And so, the reason why this policy was created was, when I worked for Councilmember Carrasco, we had an amazing, beautiful, affordable housing project, Quezal Gardens opened up in the East Side, and it was very unfortunate that local East Side families were not chosen to live at Quezal. And this is despite massive organizing from Somos Mayfair and Amigos de Guadalupe, and making sure that our community gets to stay in the community they live in. And so, if we can go to slide number six from the presentation, I really want to let folks, I want folks to see the massive displacement happening in Council Districts 3, 5, and 7. And I want to mention it because these are our historically working-class neighborhoods. 3, 5, and 7, our families in these council districts, they built San Jose. They make San Jose. They are the heart of San Jose. And so, we're seeing massive displacement in these council districts, and it's very, very sad that we're seeing that, we're losing our identity, and we're losing our culture. And that's why I support the staff report on this, and I hope that my colleagues can also support the memo that I, that we drafted, Councilmember Ortiz, Councilmember Candelas, and Councilmember Cohen. And before I do end, before I yield the rest of my time, I do, I'm going to try to say something in Spanish, so hopefully, hopefully it works out. I'm a no-sabble kid, but. Es un placer de ver nuestra comunidad, y muchas gracias por abogar para esta poliza por muchos años. Yo voy a apoyar esta poliza porque para mí es muy importante que nuestra comunidad tenga viviendas accesibles para ustedes, para nuestras familias, y para nuestra comunidad. Son muchas gracias que están aquí. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Candelas?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off my comments by thanking staff for getting us to this point, and your hard work over the last seven years on this. And next, I want to give a huge shout out to the community who came out, organized, and has continuously made your voice heard on the importance of this policy for our residents here in San Jose. So, I'm deeply appreciative of that. Obviously, Senator Cortés's leadership in legislature over the last couple of years to allow this bill to happen, and obviously, if it wasn't for Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman Magdalena Carrasco, we wouldn't be here as well. So, kudos to all the leaders beforehand who came before to work on this. And, you know, I'm especially honored to be a part of this council, to be able to sit here today and help move this policy over the finish line. This policy will have a major impact on the lives of residents in our community, as we can see here. As we deal with the housing affordability crisis in our city, it is imperative that we explore these innovative solutions to ensure that all residents have access to stable and affordable housing. This policy represents a significant step forward towards achieving this goal of prioritizing the needs of our most vulnerable residents by giving preference to local residents that have deep roots in our community, for those who work and contribute to our local economy, and who have been disproportionately impacted by rising housing costs. We can ensure that affordable housing opportunities are given priority access to these residents. More importantly, this policy will help address issues of displacement and gentrification, which have, as we heard, disproportionately impacts low-income communities and communities of color here in San Jose. I urge just to continue to prioritize policies like this for our city, and doing so will make meaningful progress towards creating a more equitable and a more inclusive community where all of our residents can live and thrive. I do look forward to voting yes for this policy as well, and like a lot of our speakers said today, Sí Se Puede, especially Mauricio, who was one of our young people who came up here and says he wants to be on the council one day. There's, when you get older, if you want an internship, my office will be happy to have you, okay, Mauricio? Nice job. Y gracias a todos que vinieron. Como el concejal Torres, estoy super contento en apoyar esta poliza, y la lucha que ustedes, la comunidad, trajo a nosotros como concejales para ver la importancia de esta poliza. Es lo que nos ayuda a mover nuestra comunidad adelante. Y muchas gracias, y hoy pueden contar con mi voto en apoyo de esta poliza.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Kame.
Thank you. I too want to thank all of the speakers that came here today, as well as thanking the staff for your great work on this. And as was said earlier, it's about time. It's about time. One of the things that I'm curious about is, why isn't it more? Why isn't it 50%? You know, your attachment A gave us, compared, you know, other cities and what they're doing, and we have New York at 50, we have San Francisco at 40, Oakland is the only one that's less at 30. So, I'm just sort of wondering why that is, because, you know, when you think about what is available in the affordable housing, you know, it's not that much to begin with, right? And if we're able to afford more of those units to people who are our residents now, you know, you provide the affordability as well as the stability for them to remain. So, to me, I would like to, I'm just saying, I would like to see it at 50%, right? If there are limitations because of financing or whatever, you know, the developers are, well, if they want our funding, then they need to do something more. So, to me, I would like to push the envelope a little bit and see how that could be possible.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a really good question, and I know the community has also asked for more, greater percentage. We did lots of different feasibility runs on our disparate impact analysis. We tried actually to get the percentage up to 40%, but the only way that that could work was to increase the number of units for folks in high-displacement tracts. However, once you get closer to 50%, that's actually when New York City was sued over the implementation of this policy. It is not per best practices to take, for instance, all of a property over for a preferred population, because we want to have a reasonable amount still available for the general public. So, it's really for legal reasons that we chose the numbers that we have chosen, and I don't know if my attorney would like to add to that.
Thank you. Chris Alexander, Senior Deputy City Attorney. So, we've looked at this for a number of years, and we compared a lot of the jurisdictions who had existing tenant preference programs, and New York City was one of the primary examples we had, because they had had tenant preference ordinance for a number of decades. And at the time, it was 2018, we were aware that they were under a lawsuit for their community preference policy. And so, we had to take a close look at what it was about their policy that was problematic. And one of the things that we became aware of over time is that there are fair housing requirements that we need to be sensitive towards when we implement any sort of geographic preference policy, because it ultimately will benefit certain people and will not benefit other people. So, we had to be mindful of that when we were crafting this policy, and considering what percentages could we maximize a tenant preference program without running afoul of fair housing law, in particular, the disparate impacts, potential risks that we face, the affirmatively furthering fair housing mandate for cities. And so, we were trying to be mindful of those requirements, being sensitive to what was being challenged in New York City, and what other jurisdictions were doing across the Bay Area. So, we arrived at this number based on an analysis of all of those factors, and we think that this is within the reasonable approach that is a best practice for implementing tenant preferences in the city of San Jose, taking the disparate impact analysis that was done here and applying it to this preference policy.
Yeah, and if I could add to what Chris just said, what I also should have said is, our demographics and where different race and ethnicities and other protected classes are located in San Jose is unique to San Jose, right? And so, Oakland has a very different look, San Francisco, very different look. Their disparate impact analysis actually could come out quite differently than ours. So, it is very location-specific. And I'll say one other thing, which is that we promised the community and put into the proposal that we would reexamine in 18 to 24 months to make sure that we're still in accord with fair housing law, but also to see if the numbers have changed enough that we could increase it just a little bit, if my attorney was comfortable. Because this is a legal issue, we want to make sure that the property owners are comfortable implementing it. What we don't want to have is a program that's really aggressive, and then every, on a deal-by-deal basis, have some attorneys reject it on those properties. It's important that it get wide acceptance, because as you said, there are so few units, really, that we need to get to for the preference.
Yeah, and that's my point, you know? Because the thing is that, I mean, just looking out in our audience, you can see the tremendous need that there is, and just doing one-third is, I just personally feel that's not sufficient, right? I understand, I understand the legal issues, but, you know, I think that, don't wait two years to say, oh, well, you know, it looks like it's going well. Like, within a year, you know, just as you implement the first year, how did it go? What happened? Because I think that if you could even go a little bit, it's tremendously helpful, because I think that now we're going to roll out this campaign and let people know, guess what, you know, you're able to apply. It's wonderful. It's a better place than we have been in the past. But at the same time, it's not enough, especially if the goal is to provide the affordable housing to those who are living in the city right now. So, I think that while this is good, I think it could be better. And as we go along, don't wait two years. Like, within a year, you should be able to see how did it roll out, what happened, how did it work? And I guess I'm not an attorney, so I'm not as cautious, but I understand. I totally understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate you pushing, and totally agree, it would be great to get the percentage up if we think we can do it legally and avoid costly litigation. Let's go to Councilwoman Foley.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all the members of the public who are here to share with us their thoughts and concerns, and also, and their support for the tenant preference. I've met with many of you in the audience, and I was pleased to bring this through CED, my committee, and to bring it here today for us to vote, and in which I tend to support both the memo and the item itself. And I want to thank staff. I know you worked really hard at looking at how to manage the tenant preference, the district-to-district, the zip code, all of those issues were things that had to be worked out during post-COVID, that was really, kind of put a pause on the normal city council work for a couple of years easily. So, I really appreciate you coming forward with a thoughtful proposal on anti-displacement and tenant preferences. I think it's really important. I also want to point out that the fair housing laws are not just restricted to the protected classes that you've indicated. Our policy does protect certain classes, but under fair housing, aren't, there are a lot of other protected- a lot of other protected classes as well, members of the LGBT community, members of the disability community, others are protected classes. And so we can't put pitch pit one class against the other, we need to make sure that all have access to affordable housing within the city of San Jose. So I'm I'm really mindful of that and and glad that we're working on the various protective class and that we do have a carve out for fair housing that says we can have this carve out for this group and not include the others, but we can't discriminate against the other groups either. And who's at risk of that is the is the landlord if they violate those other fair housing lies laws. So I'm really concerned and not concerned, I'm mindful of that. Also, we need more affordable housing. We definitely do. And today, City Council is set to vote on two affordable housing projects, and I will encourage my council fellow council members to vote in support of them. One happens to be in my district, 191 units in District Nine. That is a wonderful opportunity for people to move into the district that who want to either relocate from where they are or live in District Nine in an affordable housing project. Those are what's, you'll hear more about that project later, but it's also a number of family units are in that project. So very excited that that's coming forward today. So when we talk about either or temporary housing or affordable housing, council needs to make sure that we vote to approve both, both temporary housing, interim housing, and then when affordable housing projects come to us, that we support those as well. Because frankly, affordable housing projects take four to five years to get built. This one that is coming in my district on Kujer, we've been working on, or the developer's been working on for about four years. So by the time it's finally occupied, five plus. So I I just want to make that comment. The other thing that is really important about this this proposal that you're bringing forth is the alternative documentation, and I don't want to lose sight of that, that's really important, because a lot of the people who may be displaced don't have documentation to say they live where they live, they're not the underlying holder of the lease, they don't have the utilities in their names, they may be renting a room. So they they have nothing other than they share a room with a family. So allowing the alternative documentation is really important. And providing a list of how income is generated, not necessarily a W-2, people earn income in different ways, people can verify their their residency in different ways, they have their children go to the local school, they have identification of their children at that school or registration. So I really, I I love that, that may be the piece that I like the most about this. It's all good, but the the flexible documentation is really, really important. So how will the word get out about that? And will you be coming back to us with the list, or will that just be part of the education process when you go out with the list?
Right, and thank you for your support of alternative documentation. You're going to love the housing element item that asks us to do that portfolio wide for existing properties too, so we're going to talk about that later. We're going to be putting the list of documents that would be accepted, a draft list together in the administrative guidelines. It's that that would be approved by the city manager. And and of course, we're again asking property managers, when they put out notices, advertising the fact that they do accept it. But I was glad to hear the property managers wanted us to provide a list so that they felt protected in accepting something that maybe they don't do every day.
Well, I think that's that's wise to go in that direction, because they may be asking for something that is a confidential nature that they shouldn't be gaining access to, medical records, something like that. So helping them with that list would would really be helpful. And then, so thank you, thank you for that, I'm I'm excited about that. The other thing is that we have not just new projects coming along. So I'm assuming the projects we're voting on today, if they pass, that they will fall under this new tenant preference ordinance. But what about the ones that are already in place? How will they get grandfathered in to the tenant preference ordinance?
Yes, all new projects definitely will be subject. The existing projects that come back to us for to say, I want to take out a new senior loan, will you newly, will you subordinate again for your junior loan? Anytime we update documents, we're going to put this stock language in the documents, which gives them the the comfort of implementing a, you know, for a different population. And so we're going to do that on a deal by deal basis. What we didn't want to do is to try to disrupt the entire portfolio at the same time. However, we've been anticipating this, and so our residential development division, very wisely, has been integrating kind of general language, saying, if and when council approves this, we'll be implementing it here, and also in case of a natural disaster like the flood, so that folks feel comfortable that they can implement something different than the normal waitlist procedure.
Thank you, this is getting a little wonky, I understand, but is there a provision within our our documents that allows for a modification that we can just require the developer or the owner of the property to sign? Or do we have to go to them for a subordinate? It has to be in connection to a subordination or something else?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting really in the weeds for-
But, you know, even, we have updated documents in the past, kind of anytime somebody came to us to discuss something, if they were amenable.
Okay.
But it it can't be portfolio wide all at once necessarily.
Right, okay.
Because it, you know, we'd be interfering with the existing contracts, we'd have to talk to all the deal members.
Right.
Make sure everyone's comfortable.
Okay.
Councilmember Foley, I also just want to add, because we appreciate your concern, we did include this language about the potential of City Council passing this program in our documents when we issued our new construction NOFA last fall.
Oh, good, okay.
So those developments that we've selected, they're fully aware that they would be subject to this new ordinance.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I really am excited to be supporting in this and and voting on this. And with that, I'll conclude my comments, thank you all.
Great, thank you, Councilor, Councilor Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank staff for bringing this forward, and and thank all the members of the community who not only showed up today, but have been advocating for and educating about this for years and have gotten us to this point. So I want to thank you for your involvement. I appreciate my colleagues, and I was happy to sign on to the memo to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure the policy is effective. I do have one question for staff. Thirty-five percent set aside 20% for people in specific areas, displacement areas, and then the other 15% in council districts. Maybe this is too hypothetical and won't happen, but let's assume that the 15, you have a project that's built in District Four, North San Jose, or in District Nine or somewhere else, where the council, we might not get the full 15 applicants to fill the 15% with somebody from a district. Do those go back then to the general pool, or would those 30, would they be able to be used to make sure that we still have 35% filled by San Jose residents who are in risk of displacement?
Yes, we can still reach 35% in aggregate. And so, for instance, if if the 15% runs short of those applying in council districts, you could have a couple more from those high displacement since his tracks. You can't do it the other way around, though, we can't exceed 15% for the council districts, because that's what the disparate impact analysis said.
I mean, that's fair enough, but I would I would hope that that we, that the policy is written in a way that says if it's 20, it's 15, up to 15 and one, and and then up to 35 total, rather than 20 and 15 being separate pockets that then would could reduce the total number.
Yeah, you said that very accurately, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that that was my only question, appreciate that.
Great, thanks, council member, Councilor Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, staff. It's been too far and too long for a program like this to to not come to fruition. It's important that we help our low-income renters stay right here in San Jose and and have a a choice, in a sense, especially in the public housing. So I do have a question for you. How will SB 649 use the proposed low-income tax credit program and tax-exempt bonds to encourage development of affordable housing in San Jose?
Thank you, council member. And SB 649, the legislation that we co-sponsored, basically recognizes the population, people at risk of displacement, because they have never had a program per se, kind of like seniors, everyone has a seniors program, there's funding behind it. And so this bill was necessary and was patterned after a similar bill for teacher housing a few years earlier. And so what we were told by our council, and maybe I should be letting Chris answer this, is just that the official policy and recognition of this group as worthy because of findings that were made, lets council give clean opinion as to why, why would you restrict units available for the general public? Well, you have to do that for a public policy purpose, and that's what the bill articulates.
Thank you, and I too will support this motion.
Okay, great, that appears to have exhausted our questions and comments, want to thank my colleagues for their support. Thank you again to staff and to all of you, really appreciate how hard the community has worked to get us to this point, this is going to be a good thing for our community. I'll also just say, just a comment that was made earlier, I do think we are at our best as a body when we assume good intentions from one another, and I I fully believe that we're all supporting this for the right reason. I just encourage us to continue to discuss and debate vigorously on the merits of these policies and on and on the facts and and on rational argument, rather than assuming that any of us are acting disingenuously. But appreciate everybody's comments and look forward to passing this important policy. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. All right, we are, thank you. We are on to item 8.4, which is related to grant agreements for targeted outreach and engagement, a targeted outreach and engagement program serving unsheltered individuals in San Jose. I know we have a staff presentation. We'll ask folks to leave as quietly as possible, thank you in advance, so we can get on to our next item. Thank you all for being here. Rosalynn, when you're ready, we can jump in.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Councilmembers. Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager and Acting Housing Director. We are very pleased to bring this item to you this afternoon regarding agreements for targeted outreach and to talk a little bit about our redesign for outreach to our unsheltered residents. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kelly Hemphill.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Kelly, sorry. Hey, folks, just want to ask you to, if you're leaving, to leave quietly, feel free to celebrate outside the chamber, but we got to get on to our next item. Thank you so much. Don't forget to validate your parking if you drove, but please exit quietly so we can hear from city staff. Thank you again. Go ahead, Kelly.
All right. So my name is Kelly Hemphill. I am the Division Manager overseeing homelessness response with the Housing Department. Okay, so as you know, there are approximately 4,500 individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness in San Jose. Most of those individuals live on the streets, in vehicles, and of course, in encampments. According to Beautify SJ, there are approximately 200 encampments of varying sizes throughout San Jose. Current city-funded outreach teams manage 16 SOAR encampment sites, where case management, trash pickup, and basic hygiene resources are offered. Outreach workers are deployed to respond to the most entrenched and vulnerable individuals, those who are not accessing services. Outreach workers or street-based case managers have the highest rate rate of getting people's personal information into our homeless management information system, or HMIS, which is the source of referrals into permanent and supportive housing. Outreach workers have also been the ones placing people directly from encampments into our emergency interim housing projects. Outreach workers are the ones asked to go out in extreme weather conditions, such as heat, cold, smoke-filled air, this thing that we had, this pandemic. They're often going where conditions are not always safe, where it's slippery, muddy, contaminated air, temperatures over 100 degrees, freezing temps. Our city-funded outreach teams transport our most vulnerable when they're sick, and they're the first to respond, and they're saving lives. Unique to the city of San Jose, these outreach workers have the hardest job in the homeless service system. I'm using street-based case managers and outreach workers interchangeably, I just want to make note of that. So these street-based case managers are tasked with breaking the mistrust of a failed system. Building that trust means they're consistently showing up, they're following through on commitments, they're getting answers to questions and requests, they're taking the time to listen and understand individual needs, they're being people-centered and working at the people's pace. The city and the county rely on the street-based case managers to help these, those people living outside gather updated documents needed to transition to supportive housing. And this takes time, takes research, coordination, making and keeping appointments. Outreach requires coordination with multiple partners to successfully meet the varying needs of individuals experiencing homelessness. The city has funded a variety of outreach projects, which require close collaboration with different specialized partners. One example, we work with the County Office of Supportive Housing to ensure people are paired with the most appropriate housing option. Another example, we work closely with the library, the Downtown Association's social impact team, and the nonprofit PATH to offer a full range of supportive strategies to address the crisis in the downtown core. Wanted to highlight a case study. In 2022, the Housing Department launched the Safe Encampment Resolution Program. Outreach activities were critical in the program's success. 282 individuals were identified in the targeted encampment in downtown San Jose along the Guadalupe River Trail from Was Way to Julian Street. The proactive, consistent outreach resulted in a by-name list, which was used to understand each individual's housing needs through HMIS. We coordinated closely with the county on supportive service placements, and when combined with direct referrals to emergency interim housing, the results were 142 individuals transitioning to permanent and temporary housing opportunities. That's 50% of participants successfully exiting to successful destinations, exceeding the regional performance benchmark set at 40%. We wanted to provide a little bit of context about the difference between reactive and proactive outreach. The city has been prioritizing outreach efforts since 2013. We've developed several programs over the years, and while all are intended to reach those experiencing unsheltered homelessness, those experiencing unsheltered homelessness, strategies have varied, and most notably between reactive outreach and proactive outreach. Reactive outreach, as in our citywide outreach program, is complaint-driven and often results in only one encounter. Outreach teams are deployed to assess situations, provide notifications of upcoming enforcement actions, such as abatements. Reactive outreach does not have positive outcomes to housing. We're seeking approval to move forward with two proactive targeted outreach and engagement contracts. Aside from the Safe Encampment Resolution Program, SOAR is another example of proactive outreach. A proactive targeted outreach model has been successful, and it promotes coordination and collaboration with better performance outcomes. The mayor's March budget message states, in reference to the stormwater permit, that we must prioritize substantial investments in expanded alternatives to unmanaged encampments along waterways and additional capacity for outreach enhance cleanups and encampment abatement in these areas without simply shifting encampments to nearby neighborhoods. And this redesigned holistic outreach model will do just that. Building on the lessons learned from the Safe Encampment Resolution Program, we're proposing a one-team model to reduce unsheltered homelessness. And this model requires cross-departmental and multi-agency collaboration. After outreach provides the human-centered services and transitions everyone out of the targeted encampments, we rely on the expertise of other departments and partners to ensure the site is abated, activated, and restored. And then we move on to the next targeted encampment, which will be selected collectively by multiple city departments. By taking these encampments one at a time, we can coordinate and isolate resources and The two 15-month targeted outreach and engagement contracts will expand the Safe Encampment Resolution Model to other areas in San Jose where the impacts of encampments are most costly and create unsafe conditions for all residents, for the waterways, commercial districts, and the environment. The proposed outreach contracts would focus on consistent engagement and build trust with the goal of transitioning each individual to successful destinations, all while providing a variety of services along the way. And this includes getting their identification, access to employment resources, food, clothes, transportation, health benefits, financial assistance to reunite with family, and the list goes on. Once the encampment or target area is clear of people, the site will be cleaned, kept cleaned, and maintained, and then outreach will move on to the next target area. So this is a reminder of our recommendation, and this concludes our presentation, and we're open to questions. I do want to say, I want to give a big thank you to two members of my division, Vanessa Barretta and Greg Pentziger, who are pivotal in this presentation and this memo and in the development of these contracts.
Great. Thank you for the thoughtful presentation, all the work that's gone into it. Let's go to public comment.
Kate, when I call your name, please come down, first person to the microphone, just start, you don't have to speak in any particular order. I have Christopher West, Kelly Vasquez, Maggie Crowder, Andrea Ertoy, and Maria Ariano to start.
Hello, I'm Christopher West, I'm also an enrolled member of the Muskogee Creek Nation, and I'm also a resident at the Arena Hotel. I've came here to discuss the issue of Home First and PATH and their outreach program. If you notice, they're the only two providers up there that are doing the outreach. However, if you look at your attachment A, which is from the city, which is the guidelines that they're supposed to follow when they do their outreach, you'll notice that on page five, it says that there are no convictions for arson, meth manufacturing, and sex offenses are supposed to be allowed there. We currently have sex offenders staying at our location, and they're in direct violation of state law, because two of the people that are staying there, their offenses are with minors.
Your time?
Five.
Next speaker.
My name is Andrea Erton, and I work at Home First. Our agency has served this community for nearly 45 years. Our teams have worked tirelessly to provide needed services to unhoused and housing insecure neighbors. We have been called on to respond to saving lives in times of crisis and public health emergencies, because we are trusted partners with adept teams at meeting people's needs. Yet despite our unwavering dedication and proven track record, we find ourselves besieged by baseless rumors and ill-informed whispers, falsehood spread like wildfire, casting doubt on the integrity and effectiveness of our work. But let me be clear, these rumors are just shadows, fleeting and insubstantial in the face of our enduring commitment to those we serve. Many of you have had the opportunity to see our staff in action. As you vote today, please think of them and their commitment to this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And for those of you who weren't here earlier, we moved the public comment from two minutes to one minute due to the volume of speakers for the last item. Thank you, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and esteemed Councilmembers. My name is Maggie Crowder, I'm the Director of our street-based services. One of the most rewarding parts of this work is something we call family reunification, similar to the Homeward Bound Model Program. We help connect our unhoused neighbors with their estranged families and offer relocation assistance, work closely on securing transportation, and facilitating repaired relationships. Once we have established trust, and there are other logistics to consider, like replacing IDs and other documents, so in this past quarter, we have successfully rehoused five families back to other locations within different states or different cities. So our outreach is not a one-size-fits-all, it's about taking steps along the journey with our clients and connecting them to resources most aligned with their goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down B. Ramos, Kelly Cape, Samuel Palamares, and Peter Camacho.
Hello, esteemed members of the City Council. My name is Maria Ariano, the Vice President of Permanent Housing at Home First. Being a first-generation Mexican-American, my journey with Home First over the past nine years has been deeply meaningful. This organization has been my home away from home, empowering me to make a real difference in our community. At Home First, we don't just provide shelter, we offer a lifeline to those in need, helping them rebuild their lives with dignity and purpose. Through our rapid rehousing and services programs, we restore hope and remind individuals of their potential and their resilience. Together, we're not just addressing homelessness, we're fostering a community of support and empowerment. I am grateful for the opportunity to be part of this journey, where every day we inspire positive change and create brighter futures for those we serve. Thank you for your valuable time.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Vasquez, and I'm Home First Chief Program Officer. Our organization provides a full spectrum of services to help people find a home, improve their lives, and stay housed. Outreach is a critical component of the spectrum, offering for many their first engagement with supportive services. Our outreach teams conduct coordinated entry assessments in the field, exactly where people are, eliminating barriers to housing. They also provide life-saving services and linkages to resources such as emergency shelter. The outcome of all of these efforts speaks for itself. By the second quarter of this year, our SOAR outreach team exceeded contract goals, with 60% of our participants exiting to temporary or permanent housing destinations. This success was possible in large part due to funding for service enhancements that strengthen our program outcomes. We invite you to come visit our sites, get to know our staff, and experience firsthand the work that...
Thank you.
Dear Honorable Mayor and esteemed Councilmembers, my name is Kelly Cape, and I am proud to uplift inclusion at Home First. It is imperative to understand that the existence of low-barrier shelters and services like ours answer the urgent necessity to confront systemic failures that have perpetuated homelessness. As one of the most accessible and inclusive outreach service providers in our area, we serve as a lifeline for those repeatedly denied assistance by other avenues. This vital safety net saves lives. Our organization operates on the fundamental principle that everyone deserves access to basic necessities and dignified support regardless of their circumstances. People in power owe their communities the recognition of the invaluable role agencies like ours play in repairing the shattered lives of those who have been failed by broken systems and governmental neglect. Simply put, our renowned outreach teams meet people where they...
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Wow, okay. My name's Peter Camacho, I'm a resident of District Four, part of the Filipino Association of Workers and Immigrants and the Santa Clara County Wage Theft Coalition. I'm not here today to dispute the targeted outreach program in of itself, but I am here to express concerns about awarding or extending any contracts with Home First. As some may have heard, and especially, we've seen the impacts in our organization of wage theft, of discrimination against workers, and the impact it has to the workers and their families, and we're concerned about the allegations and the, you know, the class-action lawsuits that have been filed against Home First around wage theft, and also around discrimination against various workers of Home First. We know that, you know, it's really important to uplift and like, serve our community, but we have to really consider, who is it that we're awarding these contracts?
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Amanda Maricon, Teresa, and Blair.
Hello, my name is Samuel Palamares, and I'm here to share with you my journey of transformation with the help of Home First. Over a year ago, I was homeless and without any hope, but thanks to the support of Home First Outreach Team, I was able to turn my life around and pursue my passion. With their help, I found a safe, secure place to live, I was able to enroll in Barbara College and pursue my dreams. Now, after months of hard work and dedication, I am proud to say that I will soon be graduating and starting my career. Thanks to Home First, I will finally be able to rent my own apartment and buy my own car, something that I once only dreamed about. My story is a testament of power of hope and resilience, and I hope that I can inspire others to never give up on their dreams. I am grateful for the second chance that Home First has given me, and I am excited for the future holds. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you.
My name is Beatrice Ramos, and I'm the VP of Emergency Housing at Home First. Our outreach and street-based services in San Jose are a crucial component in the fight to end homelessness. These outreach teams provide boots-on-the-ground support, they work diligently to build trust and community, which oftentimes counters the isolation of homelessness. They connect individuals to support services that are critical, such as coordinated entry system. Our teams assist individuals with documentation readiness and transportation to enroll in these new and scary services for them. This truly makes all the difference in the world in having a trusted provider during this process by their side. We've seen really excellent results and successful outcomes when we take this approach. At a time when we have limited resources, it is imperative that we use our resources to the best of our ability, and going through coordinated entry with outreach support is critical. Outreach not only helps those in immediate need, but also contributes to a larger system of care that provides...
Thank you. Next speaker. And Catherine Hedges, you can come on down.
Hello, my name is Maricon, and I'm with the Filipino Association of Workers and Immigrants, and also the Santa Clara County Wage Theft Coalition, and we urge you not to award any contracts to Home First. They were fined in 2019 by the State Labor Commission, and also in 2023, they had a class auction lawsuit that was filed against them for wage theft. And not only have they been filed against for wage theft, employees there have also been targeted or fired or threatened with termination. So instead of Home First, please focus on new vendors who better represent the unhoused population and have better labor practices, and vendors who respect the childcare needs of working mothers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks a lot for this item. I was impressed from the previous item, a few speakers spoke of the importance of not only building temporary housing in San Jose, but to work on other forms of affordable housing, and the importance to return to the initial intentions of Measure E that we were kind of promising to do after this one year, this past year, of using it for temporary housing. So good luck with this item, and thanks for your time, and yeah, good luck how we can better address our unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Hedges. I'm not speaking on behalf of any of my local affiliations, although I did use to be a member of United Auto Workers. I'm very concerned that one of the primary bidders on this proposal is under cloud for wage theft and racism, and also has a near monopoly on so many different aspects of our shelter system, so that if somebody is permaban from one location, then they can't access hardly any other services in San Jose for unhoused people. We need to reopen the RFP and consider other bidders and give the workers an opportunity to present their labor case before making a final decision on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also going to call Deborah Michael and John. So that's Deborah, Michael, Moran, and John Betts. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Teresa. I lived on cruise when all of that happened over there. We were told by people that came out from Home First that they would help us with certain things. I gave them my number, all my information, I have never received a call, nobody has come out to talk to me, and I'm scheduled to have three operations, and I cannot have them, because I'm afraid I'm going to come out and not have a home to go to. That's it.
Thank you.
Amanda, I'll just speak for myself, I have lived in many shelters. I am sure that the people that are complaining about Home First running the shelter in Sunnyvale are not faceless, and it's just not a little bit of whispers. These are real offenses to real people, and yes, many people have shattered lives that enter here, and then to be kicked out is very harmful in some cases. When I have lived at shelters, I don't think it's a very good model, and I think that even if the operator was the best operator in the world, when you're trying to operate something that's already broken and isn't working, and it's a dehumanizing model, being housed is a rehumanizing model, and there are shelters that work, like in San Mateo, you start in group housing, then you have your own room, then you get your own apartment... You start in group housing, then you have your own room, then you get your own apartment.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Townley, and while I was unhoused, I went to HomeFirst Little Orchard, and I had never felt so dehumanized in my life. The way that they talked to me, they accused me of actually not being homeless and pretending to be homeless to get medical care. They denied me food while keeping me there all day, waiting for an appointment that I didn't get, and had to come back the next day at seven AM. They made us sit outside on the cold, hard concrete in the rain. I watched people in wheelchairs scoot themselves with their feet with garbage bags over them in the rain and in the cold across from Little Orchard to the plant in order to get sheltered during the day. I saw the inside, which was pristinely clean, but that's because they don't let anybody inside during the day. Also, it was raining and cold, and they were keeping people outside. I had a pregnant woman ask me if I had any food, while there was plenty of food inside the facility. They wouldn't give her any food until a cer-
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Michael Moran. I'm a formerly unhoused person here in San Jose. I've also lived in an SLE, and I'm also, right now, I'm currently with HomeFirst, which has put me up at a hotel. Before I go on more about myself, I'd like to make some comments with regards to something I read in the spotlight. Says here, "San Jose spent $24 million in federal grants last year on addressing homelessness of more than a thousand people experiencing homelessness. Less than ten percent eventually transitioned to any type of temporary or permanent housing." So that's like $240,000 a person, if you do the math. I'd like to address Mayor Mahan's comments. See, he spends about six million annually. I'll go on. He said he'd like to see the spending be implemented for something else. If we're not offering a place, maybe we're overspending on out-
Thank you. Your time is up. While the next speaker comes down, I'd like to call Elizabeth, Damika Bailey, and uninformed voice. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is John, and I'm with a group called SOS. Recently, because HomeFirst didn't like that our group was speaking up against SOS, against HomeFirst, they actually went to the management, the top level of Sacred Heart, and spoke to them, and so now they're getting the top levels of Sacred Heart to squelch our group, SOS, from speaking out. That's a good example of HomeFirst's devious and corrupt tactics. There's were any well-documented things of the corruption and the mistreatment of employees and clients. Sometimes mentally ill people were caused to sit outdoors all night because they thought, someone thought they were misbehaving. Other people got fired because they needed to have allowance for daycare needs for their children. So all of these things aren't just vague rumors as the head of Home-
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Stewart, and I'm a homeless advocate, and for eighteen years, I have been a very faithful donor and supporter and cheerleader of HomeFirst. However, things have really gone downhill, and I cannot support them anymore. When I visit my homeless friends at the shelters, they report that they're treated like they have no right to be there, they're liars and thieves, and experience humiliation by staff, and they end up choosing being homeless again over being at the shelter. Same with HomeFirst Outreach. When my friends at the camp report that they're treated in degrading ways, and the incondescending ways, and on the street, HomeFirst has a very bad reputation, and they are not trusted. People who are trusted are like Helping Hands, Office of Supporting Housing, Sunnydale Community Services. I don't fault the workers, I think the problem is at the top. I would like to urge you to please not fund HomeFirst, find other vendors who are trusted by the people on the street.
Thank you.
Hello, honourable mayor and council members. My name is Damika Bailey, and I'm the Housing Stabilization Director with HomeFirst, and I'm here speaking today as I am also a parent and had a child while an employee at HomeFirst. I've worked for HomeFirst for almost twelve years now, and I understand that community members want to hold our agency accountable for things that they don't have the full scope of the issue. However, I also understand that as a staff member there, that they have done all things that you could possibly do to make the work environment a great place, as well as to serve those in the community from our homeless population. As being an employee, I have seen this organization make great steps to improve and to serve more in the community, so I ask that you take consideration of continuing to allow us-
Thank you. That's your time.
Ironic that I follow the one black employee willing to get paid and come and speak for HomeFirst. We are asking for the RFP to be reopened, to give other applicants the chance to apply, and for those that already applied, a chance to improve their application. We feel it is critically important to break up the near monopoly HomeFirst has on unhoused services in Santa Clara County and San Jose in particular. When they ban a client from a shelter, all they do is end up with nowhere to go on the streets. HomeFirst is not where homelessness ends, it's where homelessness repeats itself, and when you're back on the street, you don't want to talk to HomeFirst again. HomeFirst, as has been documented, has an issue with racism. The issue is not just at the Sunnyvale Shelter, at least three sites have written complaints regarding it. Multiple small outreach contracts would better serve the unhoused people of San Jose. You should not give a contract to them, certainly not a company that is a preferred vendor of the city of San Jose, a reflection of you.
I've now called all the speaker cards after the speaker.
Hello. Hi, my name is Loray. I'm a peer support specialist with Trust Team, which is a program within HomeFirst that deals directly with mental health crisis. We work with 988. We dispatch for de-escalation or transport to crisis stabilization or mental health urgent care. We work directly with law enforcement or in lieu of law enforcement, depending on the circumstances. Being a transgender person of color, I seldom find an environment where I feel completely supported and included, and HomeFirst has provided that since I've started working here. The support and respect that they provide to the employees allows us to provide better service to the community, and I feel like that directly translates into the success of our clients overall. So I would ask that you guys continue to support and support us in our efforts to provide support to the community through the different avenues that we have with HomeFirst. Thank you.
Is that for the side? Just come up to the microphone, sir.
Sir, you can come on down. Where the-
Sir, the person of-
Whoever's comment card that was.
Rene Ramirez.
There we go.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. We appreciate the time today. You know, again, much has been said about the actions within HomeFirst. We've done a great deal to try to address these issues. We again invite you to come and visit our sites, speak to all of our staff. We've got fifteen different locations that people could come and visit. We continue to offer support to all of our employees. We continue to look for accountability around all the questions that come at us. We are not under any type of investigation. There have not been any issues raised at the local, state, federal government's levels. We are happy to open our doors and answer all questions that come from anyone that's willing to come in and visit our sites. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you all for commenting. Let's go to Councilor Cohen first.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke, and thank staff for bringing this forward. I first just want to acknowledge that this work that we do is really challenging work, and I don't think any of us know exactly how to be successful at this. I certainly don't. I know that others have a better feeling than I do, but the result of that is that we have to sort of figure out what are the expectations, and how do we measure success? Because it's not the typical measurement of success that we have in a lot of other ways. We can't just take a simple percentage and say, well, this percentage was successful and therefore, and have some target percentage. We have to, we have to measure ourselves against comparable cities, against other, and figure what the baselines are, and it's complicated. Let me just start with a question, not a simple question, but a question. What measures do we currently have in place to sort of determine whether somebody is successful at this work, or whether we're being successful as a whole at this work? Do you have an answer to that?
I'll start, and Kelly can add in. Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. One of the primary outcome measures for our street outreach teams is a benchmark around housing outcomes, so placing an individual in temporary housing or permanent housing. That's our primary outcome that is probably most important to the Housing Department. I think one of the speakers from HomeFirst mentioned it. So that's our primary outcome. We have other kinds of what I'll call things that we count or measure. So what, another, an example of that is completing our vulnerability assessments. That's our assessment for housing and what type of housing someone is eligible for in our system. So that's another thing that we measure, because outreach serves as a primary populator of our homeless management information system, so our database of people who are in need of housing. And I'll add, hand it to Kelly if there's anything she wants to add.
I think you covered it.
Oh, okay, that was the end, I'm sorry. So obviously, the ultimate outcome is somebody's housed. I guess my, you know, the hard part for me is, is one percent of the people contacts resulting in housing success, is ten percent success, is fifty percent success. That's the question, I guess, that's hard to answer, and how do we baseline what is a successful result? And I'm not asking you to, unless you have a feeling now to answer that, I think that's just something that we want to get a better handle on, is, you know, it's, obviously, our ultimate goal would be a hundred percent, but we know that this is a difficult population, that there's a lot of challenges, that there's a lot of service resistance, so it's not clear to me what the number is in which we can say we were successful, and so just, don't know if there's a comment on that.
Thank you for the question. So as a region, our local continuum of care gets together with a work group that comes up with performance benchmarks, and so we all strive to get to, we have, we put these outcomes in our contracts depending on the strategy. And with street outreach, it is a tough population, and moving straight out of an encampment, there's going to be quite a few barriers. So the COC benchmark is the only benchmark that actually includes temporary destinations, temporary successful destinations as a success. Every other benchmark is exits to permanent housing, and that's totally intentional, because we're trying to reduce unsheltered homelessness, and then the work continues once they're in the temporary housing. So the benchmark for twenty-three, twenty-four is actually, we did increase it from forty percent to forty-five percent. Forty-five percent of people enrolled in street outreach programs will exit to temporary and permanent exit destinations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. We have a joint memo, councilmembers Torres, Vice Mayor Kamay, Mayor Mahan, and myself. I know you've seen the memo, and so you've seen the recommendations for other metrics. What are your thoughts about how those metrics might enhance our ability to gauge our effectiveness and improve our performance in the future?
Thank you for that question. I definitely have thoughts about some of the metrics that are being proposed here, particularly letter C, the number of unduplicated individuals that were basically tracking rejections of services. And I think that that is complicated when individuals are not enrolled in street outreach, so you have to start with trust, and trust leads to intake in the program, and that leads to being able to track what we are providing and what we're offering. No enrollment makes it very difficult to track what we're offering and the services that are being taken. And just to take it a little bit further, the declines of behavioral health gets tricky as well, because a lot of the time, we don't have clinicians on staff. Some are clinicians, but not all, and so that gets a little bit in a gray area when we're asking our street outreach workers, our street-based case managers to even assume that there is a behavioral health issue or diagnose somebody, and so they're not trained in that. And so also, this has happened multiple times where we can offer some mental health services, and that's very offensive, and that can break trust right away. And so I think we would need to think through, is it, is it an offer of mental health services or behavioral services or health services in general to everybody that we see? And then you get into, well, how do we track it if they're not enrolled? So there are complications to some of those.
And Kelly, just on that specifically, I think the spirit of that is basically, what are those services available when requested, so that we can have better visibility into how we interact with our counterparts at the county and know when we have a request for service that they're unable to provide, so that we can be tracking that? Because it's hard for us to hear anecdotally that a service is not available without having the data to back it up and say, there was a request for this service this number of times, and we were able to access it through this service X percent of the time, and then we can actually request more service provision from partners. But Councilor Cohen, I interjected. Please continue.
Yeah. I appreciate that the model here, which I think is the right model, is a continuum of interaction that potentially leads to an outcome at some point. So how we decide at what point to say a person has, you know, has been offered service is not so clear, and so taking it, when I make a motion, you can take it in the spirit of that and kind of figure out how that can be built as a metric going forward without being too over-prescriptive at this point. But certainly, I think what's really important is for us to also understand how many folks are resistant to even the contact, how many folks are not accepting help, because that's an important information for us to know as we deal with the problem on our streets. You know, there's a certain number who are, who are obviously, will, and I hope a majority, will be taking help and building those relationships, but some may not, and it's important for us to understand that in the context of this whole thing. I was going to ask some more questions. I think we're down, I'm down to my last minute, so I'll move on to my motion and I'll decide later if I want to ask my other question at the end. I will, I will move approval of the joint memo, which includes the staff recommendation.
Thanks, Councilor. Second from the Vice Mayor, appreciate it. And I think, I just want to clarify, and I think Councilor Cohen said it well, that I think there's an ongoing dialogue with the council. I know we did our best to incorporate staff feedback into the recommendations, and staff had a chance to look at them and give feedback and help shape them. I think the spirit of it is, we want to be educated on how much we're spending overall on outreach, what types of outreach are happening, what are those, what are we learning from those interactions, what are the general trends, where are there gaps? And part of it is, we have to decide ultimately how to right-size, are we spending the right amount on outreach? Do we need more resources for outreach, or should we actually hold off on expanding outreach and putting- and put more of the dollars into expanding the places where people can go? Because if we send a lot of outreach workers out, and then there's no services to offer or we're out of placements, then we're spending money that isn't having much of an impact. So I think it's just helping us be better educated on the overall impact of those dollars and what we're learning, so we can make smarter decisions over time. Let me turn to Councilmember Batra next.
Thank you for that report. And I got a couple of questions on the outreach hours. When are these people supposed to be doing the outreach? Is it 8:00 to 5:00, or is it different hours? Could you some comment on that?
Typically, outreach hours are Monday through Friday during business hours, but there are always exceptions, especially during emergencies. We do get special requests to work in the early mornings, sometimes in the evenings, but typically, it's during the work hours, Monday through Friday.
You know, that we had difficulty with trying to establish about the RVs, whether there were people any living or not living there. By going through Monday through Friday during those hours, we would never be sure, because those people may have gone to work, and no contact was made with them. And when the community, I was in the meeting yesterday with the CAC, they're saying, "Hey, if you're only making contact between 8:00 and 5:00, or Monday through Friday, how do we know in those RVs that the people are not living?" Because those are working hours, and many of them do go and work. And hence, there is no contact with them to be able to say, "Move it into the RV safe parking." So I think we need to look into this thing. And the requests for getting those contact we made outside of those hours, the response has been is, "It's not in our contract." So I think when you're doing this thing, you need to figure it out. How would we get this in the contract? If you need to be able to say something that the hours, certain number of hours can be outside of these 8:00 to 5:00, or whatever your normal is. Because that has been a pretty solid complaint from the time of 11, 14th of July, when we launched the RV safe parking. The community has been complaining about it, that they have not been able to establish that. So we need to figure out something. I don't know what you need in this contract change, and I'm sure you had heard this before.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the comments. We don't disagree at all, and our outreach partners, Home First, PATH, Life Moves, have been flexible and are able to kind of flex outreach workers' schedules. So as you mentioned, in the case of the Santa Teresa Supportive Parking Site, Life Moves did flex schedules, as you recall, and they were able to provide outreach in the evening hours to some of those RVs and in the morning hours. So we can flex as needed. The issue that we're trying to balance is also with our nonprofit partners with real recruitment and retention hardships. And sometimes, early morning, late night hours, those are hard to recruit for and retain trained, great staff. So we're trying to balance difficult issues. But again, we work with our providers to kind of flex schedules and be responsive to needs.
Yeah, I agree. Working those odd hours in this kind of a job is pretty difficult. And finding the people who will be willing to do is even harder. But that's the need. So, and based on my attending the meeting last night, the community is not happy with the level of outreach being done. And the answer, even the housing person who was there, I'm not going to name him, was, the answer was, those are the hours we have commitment for, and reaching in the other hours is not a satisfactory kind of situation. So I just bring that to your attention. And you need to fix something in your contract that the enough hours in those strange hours, very difficult hours to work in are available. Otherwise, the program's success is challenged. And so, I think whatever amendment is needed, I'd be willing to make that. But that's a need that we need to provide for in these outreach. The second aspect is that you talk about having to make long-term contacts with these people. When do we give the feedback that this person, whoever we are making contact with, we have reached the point of no return? Because, you know, you made enough contacts. This person is not accepting it for whatever reasons. And hopefully, you understand the reasons. And do you ever reach that point?
What do you mean by point of no return, Councilmember?
Basically, declare that this person is not going to accept. So making any future contacts with that person, spending time on it, find some other way of handling that particular individual than continuously going after that. Because we've got limited resources to take care of. There are more people out there who need to be taken care of. We can't be, keep going to the one who doesn't want to take help.
I think, Councilmember, it depends on the situation. So if we're, if it's an outreach team that is reacting or being deployed per a housing department request, that outreach team may encounter that individual one time, and that's it. Because we then deploy that outreach team to somewhere else to be responsive to a request. So in that kind of situation, our interactions are often limited. Last year, we got over 5,000 requests to visit encampments. In our proactive model, like our Safe Encampment Resolution program that was funded by the state that Kelly referenced in her presentation, we don't, we don't give up. So we keep checking in, we keep offering support, and it's about that trust that Kelly mentioned. I don't know that there's a, well, after, you know, three times we give up, I don't know that there is a standard of that. We try not to give up on a human.
Okay, all right. All right, so how do we want to make sure that the contract provides enough outreach hours needed in those strange hours and not Monday through Friday?
Was that a question, Councilmember?
Yes, it's a question.
Can you restate it, please?
Yeah, because right now, you just said that your outreach is Monday through Friday, but certain times, it's needed. Like I gave you the example of the RV parking. You were not able to establish whether those people are living there or not. So how do we get the hours, outreach hours during the, outside of Monday through Friday? What do you need in the contract to be there Sunday?
We will have flexible language in the contract as far as our hours. And with this new model, since we'll be in one encampment at a time, I mean, they'll be stretched probably six to seven between any given time. But we'll be visiting every week, every day, maybe. And so, we'll know who's living there and what their needs are. The hours may fluctuate in one encampment to another. So we'll, but we'll have the language in our contract as very flexible on hours.
All right, so you take care of that, then I don't need to worry about it. Yes, for the satisfaction. Okay, thank you. Get me out.
Thanks, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Kamai.
Thank you. So we all know that this is very challenging and difficult work. So those of you who work in the community, trying to help the unhoused, thank you. No matter what, you know, what you do, how you do it, or anything, thank you. I think it's going to be important to, as our memo says, to follow whatever metrics or try to get better information, better data as to whether or not this is really the best use of our limited dollars. So $9 million is quite significant. Last year, we used $11 million. That was significant. And, you know, as we continue along this road, I don't see that it's going to be much less, maybe a little bit, but not much less, right? Where we, over year, over year, over year, are spending tremendous, tremendous amounts of resources. So I think that, Kelly, you mentioned that it's difficult to track some of this information. I hope that we can at least find a way to ask the questions so that we have a sense, even a way of being able to gauge, you know, in terms of, well, you know, 20% of the people don't want to be bothered or whatever. Whatever it is, you know? Because I think that the information will guide decision-making. And so I think that that's going to be really important. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I specifically made sure that it's in our group memo, is that I am, I would like to see more information in terms of this coming year. And so, the $9 million in the coming 15 months is specifically mentioned in the memo versus having up to three, three one-year options to extend. I would rather not have that, because I think that it has to come back to us. There's been a lot of dialogue, a lot of information. I know that, you know, it's something that we're trying to get our arms around. But I am not in favor of just having, you know, the options extended without it coming to council first. Because I think that we need to see how you're able to obtain the metrics and the outcomes. I know information does come to the committees. So I think that that may be a vehicle. But to have an automatic, "Oh, yes, you know, you got a three-year, you have a," it was in here, "up to three one-year options to extend," I think, to me, I'm not ready for that. So I feel that, I'll give you the 15 months, but I also want to be very clear as to, we need to know more, and we need to know how it all fits with everything else. We're spending millions upon millions on trying to address the issue. And I think that as we look at our budget, you know, the resources are diminishing. And therefore, we have to invest in the most appropriate. The mayor just mentioned that, you know, we have all this outreach and trying to get people in places but don't have the places. Well, then maybe some of the money should go into the places. So I just feel that we need to be mindful that as much resources as we can, we need to maximize its utilization. And I know you know this, but I'm just sort of, you know, uncertain about the way it was laid out in the staff report. So I just want to be clear that that's what we're voting on.
Vice Mayor, we will come back to you each year with a contract renewal. We haven't identified funding sources for future years, should we choose to extend. So we would have to come back to council for authorization. Secondly, we will come back through the homeless annual report that's being led by, out of our city manager's office, and we will include data on this project as well as our other homeless response programs.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because the way it's written out in the staff report, yes, you do acknowledge that, subject to the appropriation of funds and termination for the convenience of, you know, blah, blah, blah. But at the same time, I want to say, wait a minute. Let's just take one step at a time. Because we may want to say, "Well, you know, we could have used, you know, this money for shelter," or whatever, something else. So I just want to make sure that we're very clear on that and that we're not going to make it automatic.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that, Vice Mayor. Councilor Cohen.
Yeah, I just want to ask the question I ran out of time on before. But, you know, we hear, we hear a lot of criticism, and some of it obviously valid, and some, I'm not sure, but about the performance of the providers we have now, and sort of recommendations from folks who say, "Look into alternatives. See if you can find somebody else." Can you just describe for us the RFP process, the bidders, how, you know, how that went? What, you know, were there alternatives? Because I think it's important to understand the, you know, what's out there and what we're facing.
Sure. We opened the RFP for about six weeks, and we did quite a bit of community outreach to gain as much interest as possible. We did have five applicants, two of which did not meet our minimum threshold. And so, because the three highest-scoring applicants were pretty, pretty close in range, we did invite all three to come back for interviews. And we conducted interviews with all three and had the same questions of all three, and determined that PATH and Home First scored the highest after those interviews.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's important to sort of keep in mind the process that we use as a city to go out and look for providers, and that we must follow that process before we come forward. So, you know, it, we can't, you know, as a council, we can't deal with hypothetical. We have to deal with what's in front of us and what the options are. And I just want to, I think that's important as well as we make this valuation. But I do appreciate that, you know, we're adding, we're going to try to get some good metrics, and we'll come back in a year, and we'll, you know, we'll go through the process again depending on our funding and decide, you know, what's working and what isn't, and maybe have a better handle on how to determine what's working and what isn't. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Thank you again for the staff report. Tony, let's vote.
Hold on just a second. Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Tony, did that?
I think she was talking to you. Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, it was unanimous. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you all. Okay, we're on to our final, sorry, I was just confronting with Nora on process. We're on to our final item that was agendized before open forum. That's item 8.3. Now, there has been a request, or at least there's a memo, to bifurcate the vote on the two. So I think what I would suggest, and I'll look for a motion on this procedurally, is that we do the one-staff presentation and then take separate votes on the projects if somebody wants to move that. Does that, Councilor Cohen, I think you were on that memo. Do you want to make a motion to that effect? I don't have a problem with voting on the projects separately.
Yeah, I mean, I think that Councilmember Ortiz wanted to make that motion about bifurcating. I'm just gonna...
Okay, but it would be, we'd just do a joint, single-staff presentation.
Oh, oh.
What I'm asking is, can we do a single-staff presentation, single public comment, and then take separate votes?
Yeah, and then the decision to bifurcate occurs after that anyway. This is one item on the agenda. So it's...
Okay, so I just wanted to flag that since you had your memo out. We can take that vote now or do it when we come back after a public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's better. Okay, so let's go to the staff presentation first.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Rose Lynn Hui, Deputy City Manager and Etting Housing Director. The housing staff is very pleased to bring the loan commitment for these two affordable housing projects to you this evening for Cusor Apartments and North Capitol Avenue. Together, these two projects will provide over 350 affordable units for our residents. And they are specifically for extracell... We do want to acknowledge the memorandum from Councilmembers Ortiz and Cohen, and while these two projects are not city-owned, similar to some of our interim housing sites, we do want to let the council know that we do encourage developers of private development like this one to actually work very closely with neighbors and the council district offices during the construction phase of the project to address any community concerns. And so, with that, I'm going to ask Kemet Markana, Division Manager, to provide an overview of both of the projects.
Good evening, everyone. Cusor Apartments is a one-hundred-and-ninety-one-unit multifamily apartment building located at thirteen-seventy-one Cusor Road in San Jose. And five-twenty-one North, five-twenty-five North Capitol is a multi-generational, one-hundred-and-sixty-unit, five-story development with ground floor common areas and other amenities, as we'll discuss later. There are one-hundred-and-ninety-one units at Cusor and one-hundred-and-sixty apartments at five-twenty-five North Capitol. Thirteen-seventy-one Cusor will provide housing for a fifty, of which will be extremely low, fifty of the units will be for extremely low-income units, sixty-five will be for very low-income units, and seventy-four will be for low-income families. Thirty of the units will be permanent supportive housing units. There will be a significant number of family units, over fifty, slightly over fifty percent of the units are two- and three-bedroom apartments. The onsite amenities and features include a youth center, a community garden, there will be onsite services for adult education and skill-building classes, there'll also be a community, a community room and computer lab, among other features. As is generally the practice with multifamily affordable housing, multiple funding sources are being utilized here. The County of Santa Clara is contributing four million dollars, and the City of San Jose is contributing nineteen-point-five million dollars in construction of perm financing, and as well as other sources to make up the total permanent amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five The site at five-two-five North Capitol came to our attention as part of the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar NOFA released in 2021. As mentioned, will be five stories with forty permanent supportive housing units. Additionally, it will have ten units for the intellectually or developmentally disabled The development will feature onsite resident services, community building programs, few food services provided by Veggie Lucian, and a computer lab for residents, and more. Again, similarly, as the Cusor, there are multiple funding sources for affordable housing. Here, the county is contributing eight million dollars. The development received a IIG, an Infield Infrastructure Grant Award of four million dollars, and the City of San Jose is contributing twenty million dollars in construction of We'd like to thank our partners in this process, Affirmed Housing for the Cusor Project, Community Development Partners for the five-two-five North Capitol Project, and of course, city staff, including the Planning Division, the City Attorney's Office, and Housing Staff, Chelsea Bass, Michael Jung, Francisco Montez, and Lucy Ma. I'll turn it over. Any questions?
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Tony, do we have a public comment?
Yes, I have several cards. When I call your name, please come down. I have one interpreter request, so if a Spanish interpreter can come down. I have Barry Gee, Jennifer Klazowski, Gia Pham, and Soiten Del Real. It looks like S-O-I-T-E-N. And first person who's ready, just come straight to the mic.
Hey, my name is Barry, and I currently live in San Jose. I have been a resident of San Jose at a long time and have participated in special Olympics since I was sixteen years old. Housing Choices has assisted me in finding a safe place to live and provide transportation resource. I don't drive, I take the light rail, so I won't need parking. People with disability deserve affordable place to live because it's not safe to be on the street. If, if you have a disability, I experienced this firsthand when I was traveling. I was with my friend, a man approached me, yelled at me for looking at him, forcing me to give him money, came very close and threatening me to put a knife through my throat. I concern for my fellow neighbor who have disability and can't find a safe place to live because they're, they are dangerous people of, on the street. If something happened to them, they might not know what to do. I'm here because I protect people like myself and affordable housing. It's a necessary avenue.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Hi, my name is Jennifer. I currently live in San Jose. I live at San Jose's Fourth Street Apartments since two thousand and twelve. I live by myself. I had two different roommates previously. That wasn't very good. I felt extremely uncomfortable. The onsite resident support services that Housing Choices has provided me to stick to following the rules to retain my housing. I don't drive, I take the light rail and bus. Public transportation is very helpful, and I use it frequently. The five-twenty-five North Capitol Avenue, I mean, is important to me because it deserves people a place to live. With this economy today, it's becoming unfairly expensive for certain houses, such as those with disabilities to live in the communities they grew up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to point out that this whole meeting has pointed to one obvious fact: San Jose needs affordable housing. I am here to support the development of five-two-five North Capitol Avenue, a one-hundred-percent affordable housing project that will provide ten homes for individuals with developmental disabilities. This is a community that is too often neglected in our discussions and actions around housing protection. We all know we are in a housing crisis. Five-two-five North Capitol Avenue represents more than just a solution to a housing shortage, is a vital lifeline for individuals in desperate need of a place to call home. By supporting the development of five-two-five North Capitol Avenue, we demonstrate our collective commitment. We're saying, hey, in San Jose, we look out for our neighbors, regardless of the abilities they were born with. Thank you for your continued leadership. I urge you to consider how positively this will impact communities our often marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And while you come up to the microphone, I'm going to call Esmeralda, Letitia, Magdalena, and Jaime Alvarado. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, alcalde y miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Oitza Del Real, organizador comunitario en Veggie Lucian. Estoy aquí para apoyar la construcción del edificio en Capitol Avenue, ya que es una fuente de esperanza para tener viviendas asequibles y disponer de una cocina que sirve a nuestra comunidad.
Good afternoon, Mayor and esteemed councilmembers. My name is Oitza Del Real, community organizer at Veggie Lucian. I am here to support the construction of the building on Capitol Avenue, since it is a source of hope to have affordable homes and have access to a community-serving kitchen.
Veggie Lucian tiene un programa que apoya a residentes del este de San Jose a emprender sus propios negocios de comida. Este proyecto de vivienda dará la oportunidad de usar la cocina para ofrecer clases y comidas a los residentes de este edificio. Además de tener un espacio para tomar clases y dar clases de uso y manejo de alimentos. Por favor, apoyen este proyecto. Si se puede, muchas gracias.
Veggie Lucian has a program that supports East San Jose residents to start their own small food businesses. This housing project will give our program the opportunity to use the kitchen to offer classes and meals to building residents, as well as to have a space to hold and give classes about food safety. Please support this project. Si se puede. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
First of all, I want to leave clear that I'm not opposed to affordable housing. Actually, I support affordable housing, but in this specific case, I'm against to any project developed for my firm. The companies that operate that build, operate that business, such as Solar Enterprise, bad organization, who is not given proper transition to the house people and managers of the building, et cetera. For this reason, we don't support this project until they fix the problems they brought to our neighborhood, because this building brought more problems than benefits. The four residents are tired of being ignored from Bella Apartments. Now, I'm going to mention the, some problems that they brought. We have murder in those apartments, drugs, prostitution, guns, illegal...
Thank you. Your time, next, your time is up. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Esmeralda Virelas, representing Destination Home. We need to approve funding for developments on five-two-five North Capitol Avenue and thirteen-seventy-one Cusor Road. Building deeply affordable homes such as these is crucial in addressing our region's housing and homelessness crisis. Due to a severe shortage of affordable homes, many of our low-income households in our communities are forced to spend over half their income on housing, leaving them a risk of homelessness, which is one unexpected expense. Creating more deeply affordable and supportive homes like these is one of the best investments San Jose can make in addressing homelessness. They offer the type of housing our community desperately needs. Ignoring this crisis is no longer an option. The shortage of affordable housing is driving homelessness. We must move forward with the plans for development on both of these sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jaime Alvarado, Almera Government Village Advocates. Yes, 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 please fund this project. I wish you can come here every week and say that same thing, that you would fund these on a weekly basis. But I also want to say that you can do that, and we need to learn the lessons of the projects that have been built to date. So, Affirmed built a project on Fos Avenue that's called Bella Apartments. The Fos Avenue neighbors extended a hand of partnership to build a working relationship between the existing and the new neighbors on Fos Avenue. Affirmed and its management partners have been unsuccessful in meeting Fos neighbors halfway. Continuous conflicts have arisen since the opening, and Affirmed and its partners have not been held accountable to properly addressing the needs of both the Bella Avenue occupants and the Fos Avenue residents. Affirmed and its partners must do better, and we, you as a city council, we as a community, and all developers, we can do two things at the same time. We can build...
That's your time?
Thank you.
I'd also like to call down Per Mariska, Fernando Fernandez, Abigail Hudson, and Blair. Any name that I just called, please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Abigail Heinsohn, and I'm the advocacy manager at Veggie Lucian. I'm here to speak in support of the affordable housing project at five-two-five North Capitol Avenue in San Jose. In addition to providing one-hundred-and-sixty affordable homes for community members, this project will bring food security and resiliency resources to residents. As part of this project, Veggie Lucian will operate a community-serving kitchen on the first floor of the apartment building, where fellows in our East Side Grown Program will offer cooking classes and prepare tasty, healthy, and culturally-relevant meals for residents to enjoy. This affordable housing project offers resident community members an opportunity to have consistent access to healthy meals while building community with neighbors. At Veggie Lucian, we know that community is built by cooking and sharing food and creating connections with one another across cultures. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Hi, Pueblican. Thanks a lot for this item. In reading over the memo a bit, it describes you using Measure E funding for this item. Thank you. As I tried to say earlier today, and what could be more relevant at this time, just to thank you that you're trying to consider Measure E funding and, and to consider an overall holistic approach to the questions of the unhoused we're trying to address at this time. To address very low, extremely low, and, and income ideas is really important, I think. I, I've learned today lessons about how mixed income can actually be working in different ways. That's important, and I know you guys work, that I hope you can learn to share that more openly, as, as what you guys practice well and do well. And, and overall, thank you that you're trying to address, as, as government staff, to address unhoused issues. You're taking much different approaches than five years ago. Congratulations, and good luck how you can work on...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Fernando Fernandez Leiva. I am the interim policy director at Veggie Lucian. We are a nonprofit located in East San Jose, District Five. We provide a space for low-income families to connect with the land and nature, at the same time that we foster economic opportunities for community members that want to start their food business. The program East Side Growth provides technical support and training on food handlers, business management, and advocacy. Every year, we have more than twenty graduates ready to start their business, but they can find opportunities for them to start their journey. We are asking here for you, for your support on this proposal. We need affordable housing, and this is a pro, as a project that we want your support, especially the city councils that belong to our area. I'm talking about the east side of San Jose. So, we are looking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, I've called all the cards. Nobody else is ready to come up, so back to council.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, our public speakers. Why don't I first entertain, if we have one, a motion to bifurcate? Why don't we start with that, just so we get the process down, before we get into any substance?
I move to bifurcate the votes for five-two-five North Capitol and the project on Cusor Apartment.
Okay, great. So, we need to vote on that first.
My hand was raised, though. Oh, for the next one.
So, just to bifurcate the vote on the two projects? Tony, did that pass?
Yeah, motion passes with one no vote. The no vote is from Pam Foley.
Okay. And let's go, let's start with thirteen-seventy-one Cusor Road. That's what I see first on the agenda. They're both listed here, obviously. So, we'll start with the Cusor Road development, and we'll go to Councilwoman Foley.
Thank you. I am actually very excited to see this project finally come through. I think it's been about four years in the development stage, and to finally see that it's coming for its final round of NOFA funding means that we're actually going to get these proj... I think it's been about four years in the development stage, and to finally see that it's coming for its final round of NOFA funding means that we're actually going to get these projects off the ground and these units off the ground. This is 191 units. Most of them are family units. Forty-eight of them are three bedrooms. There's actually 50 three bedrooms, but two of them are manager units. And then 40 of them are, 48 of them are two bedrooms. The rest are studios and one-bedroom apartments. There's also some supportive housing, a permanent supportive housing built into this particular project. We've worked with the neighbors, the residents. I want to thank Rob Wilkins and Affirmed for listening to the community and coming out as often as he did with his team to address some of the concerns and listen to what the concerns of the residents are. And we will continue to watch this, the construction, and the parking, and traffic, and other issues raised by the development. But I'm very excited to see this come into District Nine. We already heard earlier today how important affordable housing is, and this is one project in District Nine that is almost ready to break ground and move forward with this. So, with that, I move approval of the NOFA funding for Cuser.
Great. Thank you, council member.
And I'd just like to finish by saying, we've spent a whole day talking and listening to tenant preferences and the concerns that there's no place for the tenants to go. This project of 191 units gives the tenants a place to go, so I encourage my council to vote yes on this development.
Great. Thank you, council member. Agreed.
And Rob is here, the developer is here. We want to hear from him. Is that appropriate?
Great. Sure. I don't mind asking the developer to say a couple of words. I don't see any other hands from colleagues. Councilor Foley, do you want to ask him a question and have him come down to the podium? You're welcome to do that.
Rob, I just want to thank you for being here and sitting this whole time. I don't have any questions for you. I've talked to you a lot, and we have a ground opening on another project that Rob has opened in our neighborhood, I think Friday. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Okay. Thank you, council member. And I failed to ask, often when we have developments and projects, during this, right after the staff presentation, we allow the developer to have a few minutes, so if you do want to say anything, we'll go ahead and allow you to do that now. I apologize. I didn't have that in my notes here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just, thank you, Councilmember Foley, for that. And we have four other developments that we don't have issues with, really. It troubles me about Bella. We will, you know, double down our efforts in terms of, like, neighborhood advisory council. I know we have, we have one every month. Frankly, this kind of took me off guard, so I'll commit to doing that and making sure it's right. I know that might not get your vote, Councilmember Ortiz, but we will try harder. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Okay, we have another hand. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I just want to mention that I support 100% affordable housing. I've been thrown down for affordable housing in the last budget. I'm going to be thrown down in a couple of weeks to save affordable housing in Measure E. But when my constituents come to me and say that a manager of a property is not keeping up their end of the bargain, it's my job to listen to my constituents. And far from me to say that you're not providing the same quality of servants on the east, on the east side that you're doing on the west. But on the east side, your project, it's not meeting the bargaining with the community. And so, that's why I'm going to vote no.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Okay, so motion passes 10 to 1 with Ortiz voting no.
Okay. All right. We are on to the second half of the item now, which is the proposed development at 525 North Capitol. And we'll go to Councilmember Ortiz, and then we will also allow the developer to say a few words if they would like. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our Housing Department staff for this thorough memorandum on these projects that bring to them the promise of a home for marginalized residents. It's timely to see these developments come forward, seeing that this council continues to reopen dialogue around Measure E and strives to find the balance between funding affordable housing and addressing our homelessness crisis. Ultimately, I believe that addressing the root cause of homelessness, the unaffordability of the units in the city, is the clear path forward, and these projects help prove that concept. Last week, we submitted a memo that obviously bifurcated the vote. And just to give a little bit of the context, I know well that the history that brought us here today included a major upset for the immediate community, as the townhomes that sit behind the proposed 525 North Capitol development were part of a botched signature project. That signature project included a proposal for medical offices with a shared parking lot for residents of the townhomes on the site where this development is slated to be built. In short, they made the decision to live in this neighborhood with the understanding that the site would serve a different use than what it is proposed to today. And while I certainly empathize with those who are disappointed with the new direction, the reality is that with SB 35, it essentially precludes us for any change of course. And truly, I have no desire to stop this project. 525 North Capitol stands out as a compelling development, seeing that the location is walking distance to the Capitol Light Rail Station, near southbound Highway 680 entrances, proximate to elementary, middle, and high schools, and then walking distance to the Capitol Square Mall, which houses various retail options, as well as Blanca Avrada Resource Center, which provides wraparound health services and steps away from our Delano-Mulan Park. It goes without saying that the various types of individuals to be housed within this development includes veterans, intellectually disabled, formerly unhoused, and low-income, and they will all benefit from the great services that will be provided at these centers. And furthermore, community development partners have been excellent partners who've listened to residents' concerns over parking, public entrances, and even garbage pickups, taking note to address them at a major cost to the project of itself. But to that end, my hope in creating the Community Advisory Council is not to fight the project or for future residents to fight the project, but instead to make sure that as the development process is in motion, that's done so in good faith and hand-in-hand with the community. And although the name sounds formal, I see the CAC continuing a role of a de facto neighborhood association, convening residents and property owners to become familiar with the managers, dates of events, and even work together to beautify the area. So, really excited about this vote, and I move for approval. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Condales, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. If the developer would like to say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just want to say thank you all for listening to this item. Hopefully, I urge you to support it. We feel like we've worked really hard over the last three years, both with the council members' office, as well as the neighbors, and our partners such as Veggie Lucian, and with some of the nonprofits in the neighborhood, to try to find, create this project that had the least negative impact and the most positive impact that we could, that we could have. And I think we're there. So, I just want to urge you to support this, and I appreciate everyone's time here today.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to just make a couple of quick comments. First of all, this, this site, before redistricting, was one block south of District Four. Now, District Four is a little further north, but it's an area that's really important, that I think is a great location for a project like this, based on the things that Councilmember Ortiz mentioned about being right at a light rail station, right near shopping, right near all the other amenities. I was, I'm hesitant a little bit by the type, by calling this a community advisory council. I mean, I support the idea because of the unique nature of the change of property use here and the community's concern about that. But I also wanted to make sure that, just on the record for myself, to say that I don't want to set the precedent that we would create community advisory councils for affordable housing projects across the city. I think it's, we've created, we've created what we call community advisory councils for our interim housing and RV parking and homelessness sites because of the large concerns that residents have about those sites moving into their community. And I don't want to have this be some way of implying that affordable housing projects need the same kind of community oversight that a homeless site needs or warrants, and that, you know, we're not, we're not going to, I don't want to stigmatize affordable housing projects in this way generally. So, I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record while I support this particular, the creation in this particular instance, that this shouldn't be a precedent for affordable housing projects across the city.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great point. I think it's also the case that we often see council offices set these up organically without council direction as well, which is another, another route to go. It doesn't necessarily need council direction, but I'm personally fine supporting it, as it sounds like others are. Okay, unless there are any other comments or questions? I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not on today's agenda.
Okay, I have several cards. When I call your name, please come down. No particular order. I have Naomi Brown, Juritzie Torres Mendoza, Rita Lark, Blair Beekman, and Mark Dobson. And if you heard your name, please come down. You do not have to come in any particular order. Some people are sitting at the top, some people are closer to the bottom, so just come on down.
Hi, Blair Beekman. I'll be traveling up here to San Jose, or to San Jose often in the next month, so I'll be attending some upcoming public meetings. Thank you for the work of persons on the council, working towards wanting to continue and return to the original good practices of Measure E. Good luck how we can continue its initial good intentions. I'm really impressed with the work you're doing with the RV issue. I think you're trying to take a fair and balanced approach for all sides and improve upon the ideas of, say, LA and San Diego, so thank you for that. The housing issues you talked about today were awesome. If we work on the future of tech accountability and bridging the digital divide, not just, as also in terms of tech accountability, all those are practices of peace and an open democracy and not war. And we give good examples to the world what those, what peace can be.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Rita Lark. I was here about maybe three or four months ago, and I have a new address, and I just want to know who's, who works in this district. My address is 4300 Woods Drive, and I would like to know who represents this district. Okay, mister, what I'm trying to say is, just like when I left Cupertino, they had sex offenders and all that coming over there, destroying the property, the pipes, the washers, the dryer, and all the water situations. And then, over here at the woods, they're like completely ignoring because they have troubled tenants that helped these people get into the complex. And then, there's another senior, well, yeah, he's a senior, he's disabled, just like I am. He's handicapped, and he's an empty. They told this man that they could not put those handlebars so he can work in the bathtub and all around his house. They told him that he had to pay for it. So, these are...
Your time.
And ma'am, your council member can connect with you now and follow up offline. Thank you for coming.
Next speaker. I'm also going to call down John Betts, Chris West, and Sean.
Hello, again. My name is Yuditzi, and I'm here as a constituent from District Three, and I'm here to share a story that I think about often. Hind was a six-year-old girl who was murdered with the rest of her family while they were trying to flee to a safe zone within the Gaza Strip. Her last moments were filled with terror, something you can hear in the recording of her call to emergency services. The last words that we can hear from her are, "Come take me. You will come and take me? I'm so scared. Please come. Please call someone to come and take me." I often think about Hind and think about what it was like to have seen your family massacred and see your impending doom. I can't begin to imagine what the last moments of Hind's short life was like. I can't imagine what the children of Gaza are going through as they are systematically being murdered. I believe we have the collective power to stop something that we're all complicit in and that we can do much better.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, it's me again. I needed to finish my, my point there because it was pretty important. Here in your attachment A, it says that there's no sex offenders...
Sir, I'm so sorry. Open forums for things that were not on tonight's agenda. I can give you, we can give you our email address if that's useful, and we can send that to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, do you mind sharing our email address?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is John Betts, and I'm with SOS. I think, listening to all of these, people in the Housing Department speak, and a lot of you speak, though, you have a lot of good intentions, but I don't think you really, very many of you really have got to know the people in the unhoused community very well at all. It would be good if, and if you really seemed like you hadn't ever hung out with anybody in the homeless community for any length of time at all. And then, what you, the conclusions you're making might be based on more than guesswork as you decide who to give billions, millions of dollars out to, based mostly on a lot of conjecture and guesswork. A great deal of the most successful outreach and advocacy in this Santa Clara County and San Jose is done by the grassroots advocates and outreach people who...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker. I'm also going to call down Deborah Townley and Michael Moran.
If the rumors are true, somebody from the outside broke into the Arena Hotel and raped a resident. And that's because of the poor staffing. Who staffs the Arena Hotel? And you just keep rewarding them with contracts. Unhoused people who have worked with them and not been well-served by them came and spoke to you today, and you just ignored all of them. And I don't understand. You want to hear from unhoused people. You say their voices matter, and they all got blown off today. People at the Arena Hotel are getting raped, and then a whole bunch of stuff was happening on the weekends, and then it was like, oh, maybe we should have staff there on the weekends. What's it going to take? What is it really going to take to get rid of a lousy provider? I'm just asking, because it seems like you'll put up with anything at this point. So, and I ask you that, like, in a serious way. Some of you really honestly know me. I am asking you, seriously, what will it take?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm a member of SOS. My name is Deborah Townley, and we've been trying to address the sweeps and how this sweeps, we haven't done this publicly yet, but we've been brainstorming about the sweeps. They've been going rather inhumanely with people losing their items for survival and not getting proper notice. So, we have some ideas about how to do it more humanely by giving proper notice and allowing people to keep their things and possibly moving them to a different location or offering them shelter that is humane. And we're hoping to do that through SOS, but SOS is going to be sunset soon. Our last meeting is April 3rd, so we want to get connected before that happens and figure out how we can work together to do, to work on the sweeps. I know it's...
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker.
I'd like to kind of finish up what I was saying, not related to the agenda, but one of the problems that I see with Home First and other similar organizations is their outreach program, I think, is flawed because what they do...
Sir, this is exactly the item we just took up, which was Home First Outreach. You're welcome to talk about something broader than that, but we literally just talked about Home's First Outreach contract tonight.
Okay, I'll talk about something broad. Where I'm living is... Where I'm living is a place where there are some people that want to help themselves, and there are support for those people. Unfortunately, a lot of those people don't want to help themselves. And why, there are organizations that decide to spend resources on them and allow them to live there, selling drugs, doing drugs. The man that mentioned the other thing, I just don't think is a working solution. I think, as another person here said, I think that grassroots solution, maybe if you engage us, people that have been unhoused, that have some good ideas, might be a good idea for you to do.
Thank you, next speaker. And I'm also going to call Amanda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Last time I came here, I asked all of you, what, what would I do if I can't get a council member to return phone calls or emails? And by that, I mean staff members for them. And you all said, see the mayor. So, I came back to see if, Mr. Your Honor, you'd be able to help us actually to resolve these issues. It'd probably be your help and the city managers. So...
Okay. I'm not quite sure what it's about, but Stephen Doe can, can help us get in touch.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Stephen's here. Make sure you have my contact info.
Thank you, next speaker.
Amanda from SOS. Since we're being shut down, I am sad that we never got consulted with because I do have a long-term and have planned for 10,000 people being housed. Never was asked about that idea. So, a story, why people might be tampering with the water at other people's districts, different districts, might be because they're thirsty. In, at Columbus Park, there were people arrested for tampering with, for stealing things, and they didn't steal any valuable items. They just stole food and water from the local businesses. So, people are starving, and people are dying of starvation. So, I think that our outreach should definitely be, we should be consulted about how to best serve those people. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Okay, back to council.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Thank you all. We're adjourned.